A Vietnam veteran in the Army from 1962 to 1965. He was hired by the county in 2002. He held an AA, a BA, and an MNA from Sonoma State in two years of law study. He was with our code enforcement originally, then he went to a resource planner, and then he was our stormwater grading inspector. And what was little known about Ron is he, after he, uh, he had actually retired from another career that was very distinguished as a San Francisco police officer, working with terrorist division um aft- in the 1970s when uh they had arrested uh the several terrorists, including Angela Davis. I have a picture here of uh Ron and the team uh called the San Quentin Six uh and the team that they had uh with that for uh for their terrorist terrorist organization. And Ron Yoder is um on top of the helicopter on the right-hand side. I'm gonna hold that up for you.
And I would also like to dedicate this moment of silence to Jake Feeley, who passed away um four years ago in the line of duty.
Okay, Supervisor Brown, would you please meet us in the pledge allegiance?
Hello. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, can I offer a few notes about your agenda this morning before you get started?
Uh, yes.
So, um, there is an additional extra agenda item that uh if you, if everyone refreshes their browser, you will see it. It is agenda item 4.2. Um, but I know, uh, I believe, Mr. Chair, you intended to take up the health officer's report first. Um, so I wanted you to be aware, though, that there, originally, there was just one extra item. Now there are two, another one just came in this morning. And on your consent agenda, I, I believe, unless Supervisor Sabatier has different information that 5.1 should be pulled for a future agenda date, Supervisor Sabatier?
Looking at my email and I see nothing, and so, yes, uh, that item is gonna need to be removed and pushed to hopefully next week.
And then also 5.4 will be pulled, is being pulled at the request of the department. It will also be back next week. And when you get to your public input, the um Department of Public Works Community Development Director has asked to introduce a new member of staff. So, a few notes for you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Carol. Okay, so moving right along, I haven't asked, but you just informed me there are two extra items uh appearing on the agenda, item 4.1 and 4.2. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. And Jake, you go back to the um view where we can all see each other?
So, uh, that's actually a side effect of spotlighting the videos temporarily, so everyone
Oh, okay.
Find the, the gallery option to re-enable the, the normal view.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Supervisor Simon, are you looking for a motion for the extras, or are we gonna do that at a later time?
Give me one second here. Yeah, we can go ahead and take those up now, I think that, that's my thoughts, I guess. Um. Looking to find these things here. Give me one second. Okay. Carol, I can't, uh, technical difficulties here, I
Okay, Mr. Chair, I can
Those two extra ones I don't see, if you could read those, that would be great.
Yes, I sure can. So, the first one is item 4.1, um, under consideration of extra agenda items not appearing on the posted agenda. This extra item is A, consideration of extra agenda item, and B, consideration of a letter to HCD regarding planning efforts for distribution of CDBG dash CV funding for economic development, and authorize the chair to sign. And Susan Parker, Assistant County Administrative Officer, is gonna present this item. And Susan, if you can, first start by presenting just the justification for this being an extra item and make it, or approves it as an extra, then you can move into discussion of the item.
Yes, um, this is Susan Parker. This came forward to us uh early last week, and there were amendments that were actually listed on Thursday, and they actually didn't have the teleconference call till Friday afternoon, so it couldn't, uh, I couldn't get it under the agenda in, in a timely fashion. But it is urgent because the letter, the public comment, needs to be submitted by the 22nd of this month.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Okay. Bring it back to the board for a motion. Supervisor Sabatier?
Hey, um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to um move to add item 4.1, uh, the consideration of the extra agenda item for the CDBG CV and letter to HCD uh as this was uh finalized um after the posting of the um uh of the agenda, and uh needs to be followed up on right away and not wait till the following agenda next week.
Okay.
And seconded by Supervisor Scott. Right, uh, any, um oh, you know, I forgot to any public input. Uh, is there any public input or any input i- in the room on this item? What do I need to do that right now? No, I don't, okay, there, there's been a mo- go ahead.
Uh, the, since this is uh an extra item, I think you would take the public input at the point you're considering the item.
Well, no, actually, you take public input as to whether they agree as, if it's an extra. But then this motion, obviously, as I'm sure the chair remembers, will have to be a roll call vote.
Yes. So, would be, uh, is there any public input in the room or any public input on this item?
No public input by email, Mr. Chair. Jake, would you unmute the room, please?
Yes, I will do that, one second here. Okay, everyone in the room is unmuted. If you might make a comment, please speak.
Okay. Hearing none at this point. Carol, I can't believe you said that. We'll bring it back to the board.
Jake, mute the room!
Mute the room.
And mute the room, someone said shit.
Yeah, so, uh, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board of reaction. Go ahead, Joanna.
Actually, it's Carolyn.
Carolyn, thank you, Carolyn, I apologize.
That's okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Crandall?
Aye.
Dot?
Brown?
Aye, and don't feel bad, Moak, I didn't recognize her either.
And sign in. Supervisor, thank you.
And then, and then I move, uh, I also move to approve the extra item 4.2 uh uh in consideration of the um uh Department of Water Resources 2019 Sustainable Groundwater Management Grant Program uh since the um uh letter was finalized and amended after the posting of the agenda and is due by no later than tomorrow, which is before our next available agenda i- agenda.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Scott, go ahead and present the item, and then we'll, we'll go to the motions.
Hey, Moak, before, before we start, I got a text um saying that um having trouble logging on to the supervisors meeting, public member. Um, don't see it on the Facebook page as usual or as they have in the past, so is it just Granicus that we're on here, or?
We should be live on Facebook as well, Sam, are you there?
We're definitely on Granicus, for sure.
Yeah.
Sam, can you hear us?
Like, he could, he should be able to hear us.
Give him just a moment, if you would.
And Supervisor Simon, before Director DeLeon uh provides the information, do we want to vote on that, uh, adding the extra item?
I think the way it was done uh last time, obviously, I think Susan presented it, and then we did the motion. Uh, I think it needs to be presented, uh, whether or not we're gonna take it up as a, as an extra item. I think that's how we
We gotta present the justification.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that was already done by, uh, never mind. I guess it was summarized by Carol, and Susan never got on to say it.
No, Susan, Susan spoke. Yeah. She just left the meeting just a second ago.
Okay.
I, while we're waiting for Sam's response, I don't know if other people had a screen-freezing moment, but I did. I missed a little of that, past two items, so Supervisor Sabatier, maybe you have the same experience?
No.
No? Okay, so, um, so I'm being advised by staff that um we are on Granicus, as board meetings always are, and the, and we will be live on Facebook for the public health update only.
Okay, that's a change then from, uh, last week?
Okay, I missed that, so I was responding back, did, what was that again, Carol?
Well, what staff are telling me um is that we are live on Granicus right now, as is the norm. And, and live on Facebook when we get to the public health update. And staff tell me that that's how we've been doing it for the past several we- weeks. If your board want
Okay, well, it's, it's on, uh
Open it up entirely?
Actually, it's on Facebook now, so we're, it's, it's all, it's all good now.
Okay, and
Okay.
For the future, uh, do you want me to correct that? I, I wasn't aware that we had limited the Facebook streaming to, to the, to Dr. Pace's update. I can fix that.
I think Charlie, cool. Yeah. I think Facebook is where a lot of people get it, so
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, we'll fix that for next time.
Okay. Uh, Director Delo- Deleon, go ahead, Scott. If you could present the item.
All right, good morning, uh, thank you, and I apologize for uh bringing the extra to you today, recognizing you have a, a busy uh agenda. We, uh, well, we're thrilled to announce that we received funding for the development of our groundwater sustainability plan uh from the state of California. Uh, we were made aware of that uh here a week or so ago. Um, and we found out this week that there is a window of opportunity that if we can get our paperwork in um today or tomorrow, uh, we uh stand a very good chance of receiving the funding during uh this current round. Uh, however, we miss the, the deadline or miss this window, uh, it'll likely be uh August to September uh when the next available funding uh is, is put out there. Uh, so we obviously like to try to get in uh on the available funding. Uh, so the need to take action uh came uh following the posting of the current agenda. Uh, we were made aware last week that we needed uh to get a resolution down to the state. And uh the need to take immediate action, I, I feel uh the opportunity to get the funds that are available now as opposed to waiting until uh August or September. Uh, I, I think we really need to take advantage of, of the opportunity, uh, considering the uncertainty in the state and uh the funds are available now, and I'd really like to, to try to get something down to them.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Scott, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action, if this meets requirements for an extra item, go ahead and
So I, I bring back the uh motion to approve this as an extra item due to the fact that this came up uh after the current posting of this agenda, and then action is needed before the next agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Um, we'll try this one more time, hopefully it'll go better. Uh, is there any public input on this uh item? Anyone in the room, or any other, uh, by uh email or anything else, Carol?
Nothing by email. Jake, can you please unmute the room?
Yes, I will.
Room? There's a risk.
Yes.
Okay.
Boy, oh boy, when we unmute, it is interesting. So, does anybody in the room have a comment regarding this item?
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back.
Is it Bruno's toilet flushing?
What's going on?
Go ahead, and, all right, thank you very much, Jake. Okay, there's a, a motion by Supervisor Sabatier, and a second by Supervisor Scott. Carolyn, if you could go ahead and uh do a roll call vote?
Yes. Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Wait, motion passes. All right, we'll go ahead and uh keep moving right along the agenda here, but we'll take up uh item 4.1.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair, um, uh my understanding is you voted to take this up as the, as an extra? Would you like a presentation on the, on the resolution itself?
Well, we had two uh that were taken up on extras. We had item 4.1, and this is item 4.2. And uh my thought would be, we could just go one and then two.
Okay.
Good morning, board, this is Susan Parker. Uh, the state of California is seeking public comment to allow them to amend their 2015-2020 Consolidated Plan to provide quick access to the money's earmark to address the immediate COVID-19 crisis. The Community Development Block Grant Program, this letter addresses is a CDBG dash CV, which has a little over $19 million allocated. There are three categories within this program. Economic development regarding business assistance and jobs, public services involving public COVID-19 responses, and public facilities addressing homelessness needs. Using a formula, the state estimated the following out allocations. Lake County, $215,000, $215,454. Lakeport, $70,681. In Clear Lake, $130,006. To clarify, this is a support letter of this, of the proposed amendments to streamline the grant process. Eligible programs will be identified once the Consolidated Plan Amendments are adopted and a notice of a funding availability is issued. This is a one-time award, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions from the board on the letter? Of support?
Mr. Chair, I move that we uh take this item up as it meets the criteria that came up uh prior to the posting of this agenda. It needs to be addressed before the posting of the next available agenda.
At, at this point, I think
Mr. Chair, I think you did that already.
You already did that. No, no, this is the same one, so
But I moved it with Liba.
Nice, second.
Yeah, I gotta go to, yeah, I gotta go to public, I gotta get to public input before we get to that point, folks.
I gotta admit, I didn't hear the first time, and I think it had a lot to do with that toilet flushing, but I'll
Okay, before, before we bring it back for action, uh, is there any public input at this point, um, Carol or Jake?
Mr. Chair, I have not received any public input via email, and in a moment, I'm going to ask Jake to unmute the room. Uh, but before I do that, I want to give some instructions to the room. Everyone in the room who is, uh, you know, listening to the meeting, please mute yourself right now, before you do. Because when Jake unmutes you, if you're flushing your toilet or uttering profanities, we're all hearing it, and
Yes.
I appreciate it. So, you, in addition to Jake muting and unmuting, we need you also to use your own mute button. So, please be mindful of that. Jake, would you unmute the room?
I, I do think that my unmutes powers over their mutes. So I think that's, might be what we're getting here.
Oh, okay.
We can try this again, with that said.
Okay, well then, let me change my instructions. Please be mindful of this background noise, because you're about to be unmuted.
There we go, okay, I am going to move to unmute the floor in just a moment here. Okay, the floor is unmuted, if you have a comment, please speak.
Is it time to speak on public input? Okay, hearing none?
Because, because of the process server, we've
Who was that?
The one eats whatever, I think that's where he lives.
I think that has anything to do with it.
Okay, we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board, go ahead and mute the room, Jake. We'll bring it back to the board for action. All right, it's very interesting Tuesday today, so go ahead. Uh, we'll bring back the board for action, I think Supervisor Brown, you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I vote to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Uh, please, Carolyn, would you do a roll call vote?
Yes. Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott? Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, thank you, boards.
Supervisor, could I give one more instruction to the room? If, if you would let me give one more instruction to the room, I think we may have people that are in the Zoom meeting, but not necessarily watching the, every moment of the meeting. And it's especially important for those folks, if you're in the meeting because you want to listen to something coming up on the agenda, to use your own mute button, because we are hearing uh all that's going on in your, in your background, so
And they may not be hearing you, because they can mute the sound, but that doesn't mean their microphone is off, and that could be the issue.
That could be. Jake, do you have the power to um silence somebody for whom we're just getting background noise?
Not when I, I do in general, but when I do, when I unmute the floor, it, it undoes all of that.
Okay. So, it looks like right now, from what I can see, everybody's got their mute button, except our board members who are speaking frequently and the staff that are supporting um that, that are, well, but again, it's your imposed mute button. So when you lift yours, people need to remute then, I guess, correct? Yeah. So, I think we should just power forward, Mr. Chair, and hope um we hear some different background noise.
Absolutely, you know, I think we're just hearing what, we'll just move through it. So, I will move to item 4.2. And then I see we have Director Scott DeLeon, so go ahead, Scott.
Good morning. Um, what you had before you is a resolution that authorizes the Lake County Watershed Protection District uh to accept awarded funds from the California Department of Water Resources uh for uh groundwater sustainability management uh grant program. And um the total amount of funds uh that we've been awarded is $1,392,205. And uh as a result of uh the staff putting together an argument regarding uh disadvantaged communities, uh, the state has awarded us uh these funds at uh zero cost share. Uh, so, uh, these are 100% grant funds, and um uh just an outstanding effort uh by the staff here at Water Resources. And um I would ask that your board uh approve the resolution.
Okay, thank you very much, Supervisor Sabatier.
Uh, yes, just uh two questions, one is more of a, a process, and the other is uh just a little housekeeping. I see here, when reading through this, that a couple times it mentions GSP, and I think that it was meant to say GSA. I just want to make sure that uh whatever you said, unless I, I don't know what GSP stands for, but I don't see the uh explanation of the acronym anywhere in the uh, in the letter. So like on the now, therefore, be it resolved, at the very end of that, it says Big Valley GSP. I think it should probably say Big Valley GSA.
So, the, the GSP, uh, GSP stands for uh Groundwater Sustainability Plan.
Gotcha.
And uh re- reading that, whereas, or there, the, uh, that, therefore, uh, the, the development of the Big Valley GSP is, is actually correct. And I'm going back through, and I also don't see, oh, no, it's up in uh one, the fifth whereas down, uh, Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan, GSP is defined.
Oh, there it is, it's just two lines, it confused me. Gotcha, okay, perfect, perfect. Uh, and then the other, uh, obviously, this is uh very helpful in getting the work done that needs to be happened for the Big Valley GSA. Uh, I know that there was supposed to be a committee formed uh for this. Is this kind of gonna be a retroactive approval by that committee as well for this going on? Or is it solely in our hands to approve the funding of that uh um for the program?
So, uh, it is solely in your hands as the, uh, you, you are sitting as the Board of Directors for the but you are the GSA, you are the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. The, the group that you're speaking of is an advisory group to your, to your board. Uh, so, uh, you, you are, it's appropriate for you to be uh approving this, and uh there will be meetings of the advisory group. Uh, this is uh, this was an effort to get the funding in place. Uh, the next step for us will be to put together a request for proposals, and we'll put that out uh for consultants uh to, to make proposals to put the, the development of the plan uh together for us. So, um, there's a lot of, a lot of things yet to come. Uh, this is just the initial steps of securing the funding uh for uh the development of the plan.
All right, well, thank you for bringing this to us. Uh, the amount of money that's available to us is important for us to grab, and so thank you for uh making the effort to get this to us on this agenda.
Yeah, thank you. Any more uh discussion uh from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open this up, uh, any public input on this item, item 4.2? Carol, do we have any? Uh, by email?
No, this was a very last-minute agenda item, so
Yeah, I, I'm just seeing if anybody tried to chime in, okay, uh, Jake?
I'll offer, I'll offer the resolution, Moak.
I gotta open up the room real quick, Rob, go ahead and open up the
Oh, okay, I thought that was the public part of it, sorry.
Yeah. Gotta kind of do two. Uh, go ahead, Jake.
Okay, I will move to unmute the floor in just a second here, so Okay, the floor isn't muted, if you would like to
Okay, uh, floor is unmuted, if anyone would like to make some public input, it's time to do it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board.
I'll ask the resolution.
Yeah, resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott? I didn't hear
Barry.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Delon, good job, thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, board, and again, I apologize for bringing this uh to your board at the last minute. I would like to acknowledge Marina Delajanas for uh outstanding work related to the uh uh, the GSA and the uh, the application and all the things that she's done uh to get us where we're at uh with uh, with this plan and, and certainly this funding. And she needs to be recognized for that, she did an excellent job here.
Marina, right? Yeah, thank you, Marina, thank you very much, thank you for all the stuff to work on, but Marina, good job. All right, thank you very much, Super, uh, Director Deleon. Okay, moving along um to our next item, uh, consent agenda items. Uh, these items are usually non-controversial and able to be approved uh by the board. Um, I know that uh at the beginning of the meeting here, uh, item 5.1 and item 5.4 are going to be pulled for next week, April 17. uh item five point one and item five point four are going to be pulled for next week, April twenty eighth, the four twenty eight meeting. And um so that leaves a couple of items. So we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board here for the consent agenda. Is there, that should be it. No more items to be pulled from the board? All right, we're going to open it up to the public. Are there any items that need to be pulled from the public? Uh, Carol and Jake.
No requests by email. Jake, if you hit the room.
Okay, I will unmute the room here. Okay, the floor is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, you have a moment to speak.
Okay.
Okay, hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
The Chair, I move to approve items five point two and five point three from the consent agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Carolyn, go ahead and do the roll call vote.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Aye.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, moving right along our agenda here, uh we have our timed items, which is uh really number six point one, two, three, four, four, nine oh one AM item consideration and an update of the COVID nineteen. And today, once again, we have Dr. Gary Pace to um present uh our COVID nineteen update. Good morning, Dr. Pace.
Good morning Supervisor uh Chair. Um, thank you for the opportunity to talk again today and um update everybody on the COVID situation in Lake County. So we're um, we continue to be in a similar kind of position as the last week where the cases are starting to drop off sort of regionally and um statewide, although some of the deaths down in the uh Southern California continue to be um so we're, it looks like we may be passing the peak in certain areas and then other areas uh may still be, be increasing. So we're kind of waiting to see. Sonoma County now has a hundred and eighty cases and um that seems to be slowing down over the last several days, although they're anticipating their peak not coming for another month or so. So we'll see if that needs to be adjusted here. Um, we in Lake County have, have six cases that have been identified. Four of those have uh recovered and are off of isolation now. The fifth will be off uh, or I guess it was yesterday came off. So there's really only one still on home isolation. The um there are some signs of community transmission now. This is really the first time we've been able to pick that up within the last week. One of the cases, we started doing a lot of um uh contact investigation. And it seemed like some of the people that this person had been in contact with had been ill with COVID-like symptoms a week or two previously. And uh so that's the, really the first sign we've seen of kind of cases that were most likely COVID that weren't um, weren't picked up with testing. The other is, is uh, we, eh, at Water Resources, they did some testing of the sewage at the treatment plants. And um, so this was done back at the end of March and then at the first of April. And both of those times, there was no signs of any virus particles in the raw sewage. From April eighth, uh a sample came back or some, some results came back uh that showed that there was presence of virus particles in the, in the raw sewage at the treatment plants. And um this is kind of a new technology. Um, they were actually very, very quick to get involved in this technology over at Water Resources, which is a good thing. Um, it, but it, it looks like it's an indication for some presence of the virus in the community. And this was present at all four treatment plants. And so that, that indicates that there's some um possibility that there's been infection out in the community since April eighth, which was when the samples were taken. Um, so I think the context of that is, is that this isn't a surprise. It's not even a bad thing. We want the virus to get out in the community. We're, the, the long range goal is to get immunity within the population, but we want it to be traveling slowly and not um overwhelming the hospitals, not uh uh getting to the vulnerable population. And it seems like that's what's happening. We're not seeing big surges in the hospital. We're not seeing a bunch of people in the ICU or anything like that. So it's uh um, at this point, it seems like things are moving in an okay way in terms of the virus and the outside. So we're kind of in this position where we have, we're kind of trying to do three things at once, which is there, it's sort of tricky because they're a little bit contradictory. The first one is we've been the shelter in place orders in place and the people are using masks and there's these different um strategies to try to decrease, to slow the spread of the virus through the community. That seems to be working. And of course, there's a lot of talk about loosening the restrictions at this point, and we'll get into that a little bit later. The second is we're sort of working with the healthcare partners, the nursing homes, the, and the hospitals and the clinics about how to deal with people that are sick, kind of preparing for surges, sort of preparing for the worst case scenario, which is like uh, like I say, in Sonoma County, they're seeing, they're preparing for um uh the not, not even being at the peak yet. Certainly, we're in a rural county and it's a little bit different here, but we are right on the border of uh, of a big outbreak down in the Bay Area. So we're, we're in this kind of uh uh situation where we might, it might just pass us by, or it might be very slow and easy to manage. Or it's not hard to imagine uh a couple of folks coming up from the Bay Area and seeding the virus in the community and things getting out of control. So there's these three pieces. The first one is the, is the trying to decrease the spread, slow the spread. The second is preparing for the hospitals and the SNFs and everybody to be uh, be ready for it. And then the third is, we're actually in this position of starting to talk about loosening the restrictions and how to move forward for, over the next period of time in a safe way that keeps people safe, but starts letting a little more mobility, letting people um, letting the businesses start to come back into, in, into action again and, and having the economy move again. So you know, those are the things that we'll kind of need to talk about a little bit, but that's sort of the, the context. So um we're testing is a, has been an issue all along. It's still an issue. We've done a total of four hundred and twenty tests in the, for people in the county. Um, we've been in contact with the state. They're working to help us. They're working to help, to get a big, a big shipment of sampling supplies and also to increase the capacity of the laboratories. And so uh there say, I was on a call yesterday, they said probably within a couple of weeks, they're going to have these a, a lot more swabs and a lot more of the sampling supplies, which has been really the thing that's been the, the bottleneck here in our county. Um, down at UCSF in San Francisco, they've now opened up, they can do twenty-five hundred samples a day. And they've opened it up for the whole state, basically the different public health departments to send specimens down there and they can turn them around within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. So we're getting, it's just, just starts today. We're getting an account going and we're going to start working, working with that. Um, the different hospitals have uh now have sort of new technology working. The Adventist chain has a, a machine up in Willets that they can do that turns it around in forty-five minutes. Sutter has a regional lab and I, I just heard today that tribal health just got an in-house um machine so that they can actually do onsite um testing as well. So again, part of the issues are sampling supplies and we have to, we're constantly struggling with that. We're, we're on Amazon. We're working all around trying to get some of that, as is everybody else in the state. But um it looks like we're starting to make a little bit of progress and I think there's going to be a lot of progress in a couple of weeks. So we're trying to just sort of bridge that at this point. Um, the hospitals are still in a low, um, they, they still have a low census because of some of the preparations they've made. And so the, the surge issues are not a, not a problem right now. Um, we're continuing to work with contact tracing and isolation and the quarantining and all that's going well. These are important um tools to have in place to follow all this and uh uh that so far that's going well. I think if, if the cases increase a lot, we're going to have to bring in uh some of the volunteer workforce that we've been cultivating. Um, for the homeless situation, the vulnerable homeless folks, there's a new uh project called Project Room Key that's setting up some rooms for the Pastor Shannon and a team that was working on, it's going to be setting up rooms to get the the vulnerable homeless people, the people that have either because of age or because of underlying medical conditions. They're particularly concerning if they would get sick to give them a place where they can actually shelter at home instead of having to be outside. So I mean, I think all of this is um those are kind of the preparations. And now the kind of the, the discussion about the end game, about how we're going to be able to um loosen the restrictions and try to get back to some semblance of normal. The um, the people that, that really what the experts are saying at this point is that we're probably not going to be back to where we can have large gatherings uh of just kind of normal activity anytime in the near future. We don't know how long, but it could be until a vaccine's available. It could be um until the virus mutates and no longer is a problem. It's just not clear, but the way it is now, it's pretty clear that if we pull back the, the covers too fast, that the surge is going to peak again. And then we're, we're back into this, into the situation that we've worked so hard to prevent. So the idea is, is to try to be sort of methodical and meticulous and try to move, loosen the restrictions in a way that is um, allows activity to happen without allowing the risk to just escalate rapidly and to protect the vulnerable people in the process. Um, so I think the kind of the way we're thinking about this is loosen a little bit, wait two to four weeks, see how the response is. Hopefully by then the testing gets in place better and loosen again. And then at any point in time, if things start getting bad and there starts to be a lot of cases and it becomes difficult to manage, that we clamp back down. And um so I think everybody needs to be aware that as the loosening happens, there's always the, the kind of the risk that the clampdown has to, has to come back in. I think another part of this is, is that the vulnerable people probably are going to need to be on some kind of lockdown indefinitely. Um, the uh what we've done now is we basically shut down most of society. And a lot of that is to protect the particularly vulnerable folks. And other people are getting sick and very sick, but it's a it's the particular concern is the elders and the folks with underlying medical conditions. So those folks are probably going to need to be on a, some form of isolation indefinitely at this point. The other thing is, is that the more we can put other protective things in place, people wearing masks, the social, keeping the social distancing going, the more we'll be able to loosen up the kind of overall restrictions as long as people can, can do that. And then I think the last kind of general rule about this is going to be, I think the hope is going to be to try to really limit the folks coming in from out of town. Um, and I know that's a, that's a difficult thing because so much of the economy is based on that, but I think that's really where we're going to see the infections really taking off as if we open up the lake all the way and people start coming in and staying in the hotels and stuff. So um we have a working group now that's met for the first time last Friday, which was very helpful. And then there's the blue collar group that um Supervisor Brown, Supervisor Crandall are part of, that's working with some of the business interests. And we're kind of taking in uh whatever input we can get about this. And um the uh the orders expire May third, so something else will be in place by then for sure. The governor, it looks like he's sort of hinting that he may um modify things somewhat by the end of April, but there's no clarity about exactly what that is or what he's talking about doing. And the, the state orders are the foundation. Anything above that is uh, any, anything more restrictive is okay, but we can't do anything less restrictive. And really, a lot of my interest right now is trying to think of how to get some business activity loosened up a little bit. But the governor's orders are pretty uh blanket about most of that. So there's not a whole lot more that we're doing in Lake County that's restricting that the governor's uh it's different from what the state order is. And so we're going to have to wait till some of that shifts. Um all right, we are looking at loosening things. I'm sort of uh liking to consider possibly by Friday loosening some of the recreation restrictions. And um so you know, maybe loosening up so that people can hike a little more as long as they maintain social distancing and they don't do any gathering. So that maybe people can fish on the side of the lake with uh where they keep the social distancing that um there can be non-motorized boats, so like kayaks or and uh um canoes can go out as long as it's just one or two people and they're not um uh, you know, gathering or on the, around. And uh, I think probably considering loosening up the law restrictions with certain kind of caveats with that. And uh, you know, so those are the kind of things, those are the first steps. Then we see what the governor does and we see how the cases go over the next couple of weeks. And then we look again. I uh, I think the business, the businesses are the big one that really we need to try to get some lu- uh loosening up there so that people can start having, you know, the, the sort of negotiations like that. So, and uh we're going to be basically just trying to keep aligned with the, with the region and the state, although you know, we are different from San Francisco and Alameda Counties, but it's, it's not going to do any good if we loosen up a lot and they don't. And then all the people will be coming up here. The, the rural counties all around the state are struggling with this, whether it's up in the, up in the Sierras or up uh in Shasta and all that. They're all trying to figure out how to how to a- allow the local people to pa- participate and, and get outside and live their normal life to some extent without overwhelmed with the uh urban folks coming up and, and wanting to get involved too. So I mean, I think that, I'm sure there's going to be some questions and some comments. So um, but I think that's the, the report I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Uh Supervisor Brown?
So thank you, Dr. Pace. Um you covered a lot of information. I wrote some stuff down, but I'm just, I'm not, I'm not keep it because it's, some of it's kind of obvious. Um, so you talked about the death rate. Well, the death rate is based on, or you have talked about the death rate, but the death rate, death rate is based on uh the amount of um deaths compared to the um to the uh number of positive tested uh cases that we have. But now we're finding out that the those that are positive are much greater than those that we've actually have tests on um that, that it's come through here uh through the state already prior to the shutdown and all that. And by evidence of the sewage testing, that, that's not just six people causing that. That's a lot. I would, I would guess. Do you have any idea what that is? Any estimates?
Well, uh, it's hard to tell. There's a lot of variation in there. There's not, there's not good correlation with that at this point. I mean, I think the fact that all four treatment centers had it, I think it's, you can say yes, no is a, is a probably pretty reasonable. They, they're, you know, they're, then, then it's all just very estimate because we don't really know. It's hard to know. We don't really know how many people are out. They, they don't, there's not good evidence.
Right, but there, there is evidence to support that there, that there are a lot more than the six people that we have tested.
Well, I can say, I don't know that. I can say that there seems to be signs that there's people in, you know, that are using all four treatment sewage treatment plants that were positive. Yeah. So yeah, I think that, you know, in the county, in the other counties that are, that have been able to do these antibody tests that what you're referring to, uh, they're basically estimating anywhere from ten to twenty to fifty times as many people are infected as the confirmed cases. So yeah, I mean, the point is.
Well, I would, yeah, I mean, I don't know how that works as far as uh, you know, the, the testing in the sewage, but it seems to me like it would be even more than sixty. If we have six and it's ten times, it would be more than sixty people would have to be positive at some point for that to show up that prevalent in, in the sewage. But no, neither of us know that. So I don't know what the uh, what that is. So so you, you said uh a period of, careful to say a period of time that will open up. But a- and then you said something about some of these things that, that I'd sent you the letter. Uh, actually, I sent it to you Easter Sunday. So that's been a couple of weeks, um, a little over two weeks. And then maybe Friday. Why, why not just today? Why not just say, yeah, let's just do it? I don't know why, with Friday's an arbitrary, arbitrary thing. I think I'm just, you know, curious as to why we can't just do it now. And, and then, you know, there are some things that we are doing that are more restrictive than the state. The Realtor issue is one of them. They're not requiring them to do, just do virtual. That's, that's kind of a big deal. But there are others and maybe, maybe we could just say, right now, we're going to abide by the state um standards until the state loosens up. At least that'd be something that we could do. And I, I'm just not clear on why we can uh, why we should just wait on that. I think we should just do it. If we're going to do it.
Well, you know, from my point of view, it takes some coordination with the different um the different agencies that have to enforce this and do all that. And so it's basically a coordination issue.
I I'm still not real clear on on that. I mean, if we just we spend the rest of the day coordinating that, there's. There's I don't know what there what there is. There's a sheriff's department. There's the health department and that's it. But you know, there's. If if I'm oversimplifying it, that's it. Those those are the only two.
Okay.
Well, I'm just asking. I'm only one board member. There may be others that don't feel that same way, but I don't know why why Friday would work, but today wouldn't. Um, and you know, we've had a couple of weeks. I know there's been a lot of thought given to this. I know you've. You've thought about it. You've talked about it, and I I'm pretty sure that you've talked to other the agencies already, so maybe they have a have an idea. Um, right now that, you know, we can just do it. Let's just open it up. I I'm I'm down for that if if that's possible. So just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Sebastian?
Um, thank you very much for uh the report again, Dr. Pace. Every week. Um. We gain a little bit more information as to how this virus works. Uh, I know that it's a moving target for everybody. Uh, I I know of the things that Supervisor Brown mentions, but when you really read into those reports. They're just kind of uh uh. They're still based on a hypothesis and not empirical evidence. Uh, and and even then, the tests are being questioned as to the validity of the tests that they're doing for the antibodies and whatnot. So we don't have. Any specific information as to how much more there could be. There's a lot of speculation in all of that. There's a lot of speculation in the data that we're talking about when it comes to. Uh COVID nineteen. We know at the beginning the tests were of not a very high percentage of uh. Uh, or at that level of percentage that we would have want for those tests to be correct. Uh, those have gotten better over the time period as we keep moving forward. Uh, I appreciate the fact also that we are doing more testing now. It seemed like we needed a case. In order to really have a good reason to start testing more people who may not have had the acute symptoms that we were looking for originally. Uh, and I know that you're working on uh other avenues for more testing. I think that's gonna be one of our key. Things for um moving forward is gonna be the testing. It's gonna be helpful to kind of have that radar view of where things are happening and where things. Where there might be a hotspot where there's not some hotspots. Um, I know that you have the uh Friday work groups. Uh, I'm thinking that you're meeting every Friday. I'd like to get uh an idea of who is on that work group right now. Because I I only know that Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Crandall's on there. Uh, I just wanna kind of get an idea of what that balance looks like in that work group. Uh, not to tell you to change it, but just so I'm well informed as to who is on that work group and and how things are moving forward. Um, I am in favor at of looking at ways to uh meet the state standards. Um, there's not much that we're restricting more than what we're doing than what the state is asking. I think the lake is probably the biggest one. That's really different than what the state is asking, and I think that I I agree with your assessment that we look at an incremental. Movement towards reopening the lake. Uh, I also agree with you, and this is where Supervisor Brown and I will disagree on the real estate one. Where out of county folks being invited to come to our our communities is is not the direction I want to go right away. I want to look at internally. How do we open up and then slowly again ramp up, check numbers, have some measurables that we can look at to make sure that we're not making the wrong decisions. Uh, for for real estate, if you're local, uh then you have the opportunity to do your business with the locals if you're out of town. Uh, and and we need to. My opinion is we need to provide those types of uh. I know I saw a letter. Uh, that was submitted by the real estate uh, the Associated Association of Realtors. Uh, I think that that's the type of letters that I want to see uh from other businesses. How are you going to apply these standard guidelines for social distancing because it's not gonna disappear because again, we don't have treatment. We don't have a vaccination. Uh, we are looking at a percentage right now that is still concerning as far as the impact to a community. Uh, we don't want that here. So how are you going to open up your business and do social distancing? And I'd like to see it almost like environmental health where once a year. They're gonna come by a restaurant and check on you and make sure you do things right, and then they trust you for that year until they get a complaint. And I think that's the way we need to roll. We have to trust. Our businesses. Once they submit a plan, we approve the plan and then we move on and we have to trust that they're gonna want to do the right things because. Every business right now is probably scared to get us a a Yelp review that they're not practicing good COVID nineteen. Social distancing. So I think our businesses are gonna do the right thing once they have the opportunity to do those right things. Um, but I think that it's not just a blanket statement of you're open. I think it's a we need to make sure that you have a plan. Because if you don't have a plan, uh then we're we may have some issues. Uh, but I would like for us, I will. Can you tell me when is the uh supposed expiration date of the current governor's shelter in place? Is it May tenth, May thirteenth?
There is no there is no back end, though. They just left it open ended, and so he's gonna need to replace it. Um, at some point if he's gonna change things. So it does. If he doesn't do anything, it just goes on indefinitely.
The indefinite is not good, and I'm sure he knows that as well. So uh I know that I I will just for transparency purposes, I have submitted emails. Uh, requesting that it 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 should be a county by county because I think that a uh state. Direction when LA is horrible and yet here we are with six and we've been very fortunate. And I will say, I believe that it's the result of us sheltering in place. Uh, I don't think it's just that's what would have happened naturally if we did nothing. Uh, but I think that we can't have a state guidance when he's dealing with high density population like metropolitan areas like San Francisco, the Bay Area, LA, Sacramento. And then we have us who has a very low population density on a per acre uh basis that we should be able to. Meet those standards of the guidelines for being safe, but also deciding our own uh. Pathway on how to get there. Uh, so I would like to see us uh slowly incrementally start. Moving towards meeting the standard of the state, which would mean slowly reopening our lake. Two residents only of Lake County, not inviting other people to come quite yet. Uh, let's make sure we get to that comfort zone. Uh, but I also would like to start the process because I don't want to start the process after it's been reopened by the state. I want us to be ready to open up our businesses as soon as the state says yes by having plans in place for those businesses. Where they're gonna understand how to do their social distancing and how to uh keep moving forward in a way that's gonna keep our uh communities as safe as possible.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Brown?
So just a response to a couple of things that um that Bruno said um. It's all hypothesis and and not empirical. It's all that. It was that when we made the decision to close it down. It's all hypothesis. In fact. The the study and the modeling that we took was from somebody, uh, an organization called the Empirical or Imperial College of London. They're they're completely off on everything. Now, it could be because we exercise this social uh. Distancing and shelter in place. It could be that. That's what everybody's taking credit for, and we've got no way to prove one way or the other, but that's still hypothetical. The out of county folks that you're trying to keep out, you're not keeping them out. What's happening now with the real estate industry is the real estate industry has to abide by a standard, which by the way, you can't show to locals either. So so what you're saying is not completely. I I don't think you're you have the information accurate. If somebody is local and they want to go see property, they can't go see it either. They can apply for this extension, but so far everything's been denied. So. So I don't know, or not not extension, but an exception. Um, so what you have right now are people that are deciding. You know what? We won't go through a Realtor. We'll just advertise on Craigslist or somewhere else and we'll have somebody come up and they're coming up. They're coming up and looking at property. And they're buying property without using a Realtor. So so you. The the effort is symbolic. It's not helping anything at all. Um. And. There are. We do have a lot of restrictions. We have the same thing that uh that the governor has imposed, but we've added a little bit to a lot of these, you know, so. So we we actually do, and I I I think that we should. Propose now to open it up to what the state standards are and uh, you know, they we always have the ability to shut it back down. But it's gonna be what it is. You have, you know, right now the traffic's not died down. I mean, I'm sitting out there working on a job by the road. I see traffic driving by in Kelseyville. All day long. And so in checking with the um with some of the local businesses that are open. What you have are, you know, say you have a thousand people that are shopping at a hundred stores normally. Now that same thousand people are shopping at only twenty stores that are open. So you're not slowing down. Progress there. You you got still people moving. There there's no mobility, uh very little mobility that's changed in this and all the cases that we have. Except for one that I'm not sure of um have come from the people in Lake County leaving the county and bringing it back. So it's not coming from outside of the county. It's coming from outside the county, but it's coming in that fashion. So I mean, if we were serious about stopping that down, then I guess you'd stop people from leaving the county. And contracting and bringing it back, and we're not gonna do that. So I think we just need to be honest about what what's really happening here, or at least. Factor that in when we make our decision and um. And just open open things up to what the state standards are. At least get it to that. I don't I don't see this arbitrary date of Friday being anything other than. Kick a can down the road a little bit longer. That's that's what I'm seeing.
And just to respond to that, um, I don't think we can stop anybody. We don't have a checkpoint. We we're we're not stopping anybody from coming in. I just don't want us to invite people and say the lake is open. Come and go fish in Lake County. At this moment in time, I want us to take those incremental steps.
If you looked at my letter that I submitted over two weeks ago, I actually said that in there. Uh, kayaking to locals, so I've taken that into consideration. What I'm referring to is your comment about not letting locals come in to buy property. They're already doing that. And they already own property up here and they're coming up and developing it. They're doing things up here right now, buying stuff at the lumberyard and doing that. People that live from out of county that that have property up here. So they're already doing that. And the real estate industry, as as Eddie will attest. They've gone through great lengths to try to identify ways to make it safe for them, their customers and and their employees. And the you know, these folks, there are no hotels. There's no restaurants, so they're not coming up here in vacation while they're looking at a house. They're coming up with. Serious intent of looking at a home and then going back wherever they came from. Whether they make the deal or not. They're not coming up here to go wine tasting and all that. So I think that the risk is so minimal that it's um. It 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 shouldn't even be considered. I I I honestly believe that.
Thank you again, Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Scott or Supervisor Crandall?
I guess my only question would be, other than the lake, what are the other restrictions that we have that are harsher than the state of California? I keep hearing that we have harsher um. Things in place. What what are they that we have?
Go ahead, Dr. Pace. You can you.
Well, the ones I'm aware of, the main ones I'm aware of are the ones we put in basically to. Shut down the lake as much as we did and and the restrictions on all the hotels and Airbnbs and everything. The restaurant one, I mean, sorry, the real estate one is is correct. We did. Really clamp down on that mainly because of the concerns about the out of area folks coming in. The uh I would disagree with you a little bit Supervisor Brown in that we have granted a couple of exceptions. There's. And the ones that we haven't granted were from folks from out of the area. Uh, was the way I that's the way we're we're intend to be doing it anyhow. If there's a if there's something that's not right with that, let me know, but um. And I think, you know, one of the things is I'm interested in opening up the real estate. The real estate folks have been very good. I agree that they've been very. Uh proactive in sort of trying to set up a a way that they can do business um in a safe way. So you know, one of the probably in this in this first round of modifications, it will be to just. Open it up for local folks to be able to do that. The out of town folks, I still want them to be applying for exceptions. And uh kind of being in conversation with us as opposed to just giving a blanket. Um, thing, but the other other than that, there's um, there's very little that I'm aware of that we're more restrictive than the state. Um, but if if people will point that out to me, I'm very interested in. In trying to do basically what Supervisor Brown is saying to see if there's ways that we can modify it and and get it. Um, safely go to basically where the state is. So if anybody's aware of any, they can email me and let me know.
Okay, so you're saying that the real estate. Oh, I wasn't.
Go ahead, dude.
Um, you're saying that the the real estate, you're trying to lift that in the next modifications. Do we have a timeline? I know you said Friday with maybe doing some different.
I think what I would do, what I'm thinking right now is do these recreation pieces and then the real estate. To allow local people to look at houses to act. What I the way I'm framing it is I want. People to do as much as they can virtually, and then when they get to the point where they're really getting serious about it. That local people can go look at the house without any restrictions except for social distancing and hand washing and stuff. The out of town folks, when they get to that point, they're gonna need to get an exception to come in and to get it get basically contact the health department and get a. You know, have a discussion with us about why this is important. Basically, the idea is to try to discourage people. From the Bay Area coming up and just looking at houses kind of when they're not really needing it or serious about it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, so um. So the uh I I wasn't aware of any exceptions, and that's what I said is the information, the last information I have was there haven't been any exceptions. So if there has been, that's been a recent development for any locals. Uh, I was responding to uh Bruno's comment that. Only the out of towners need the exceptions, and that's not the case. They all they all do up until now. If you're gonna change that, you're gonna change that. The the reality, though, is that there have been several exceptions that have been applied for. By out of towners and they've been denied. So it's so it's kind of pointless. You know, that's what they've they've lost hope that, you know, why even go through the exercise is just gonna be. You know, it's it's uh it's kind of like back when PG&E was telling us, you know, you can apply for this, but we're gonna we're not gonna grant it. So at least they were open about it. Um, the and and us to determine what somebody's need is um as justification. People are selling their homes and they need to buy another home. So you know, either they buy it up here, they buy it somewhere else. They're going to buy it. Um, I I don't think, you know, I'm I'm not qualified to tell somebody what their need is, what their need isn't. Um, I do know that the real I I trust the real estate industry to determine whether or not it's safe for anybody, regardless of whether they're local or not. To uh to come look at a home. Uh, the homes are are generally empty. That should be one of the criteria. If you're going to. If the home's empty, there's nobody else there but the Realtor and the the potential buyer, let them come in. They're they're. It's it's it just makes sense to me, and that's what a lot of this has to do. It has to at some point. Common sense needs to dictate some of this because we are realizing realizing on others' studies and. Um, worst case scenarios and all this stuff, things that aren't even coming close to the expectation of what we were told two weeks ago. Month ago, six weeks ago, whatever it was. Um. The Airbnb, Tina asked what some of the exceptions were um or some of the the uh greater restrictions that we have, the Airbnb. So so we shut down the Airbnb. In fact, we actually had the sheriff's office going out. Pulling records to see if somebody's actually renting them out. Um, and. So what the Airbnb folks have learned is that if you just take it off the Airbnb website and put it on Craigslist, you can go ahead and still advertise it. So they're still. They're still doing that in some cases, some of them that don't care. Uh, fortunately, we have a lot of people out there that that do care, and so they're just losing income. You know, at this point, they're not. Um, they're not trying to be in violation or anything, but they're just, you know, flat losing income. The real estate thing is a big one. Uh, it's not ju- it it may be just one thing, but it's probably. The percentage is much greater than one percent, you know, so it's 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 pretty substantial. And um, I I honestly, I can't for the life of me figure out why somebody, regardless of where they live, can't come up. I mean, they're they're willing to um. To get the thermometers that the pharmacy uses. There are more sick people coming in and out of the pharmacies, I'm sure. Than uh coming up to look at real estate and they have those thermometers. They can check them before they come in. There's things that they can do for screening. Just the same as the jail does when you go out there to drop off a uh, you know, paperwork or anything like that. So. Or visit or they're not visiting right now, but people do go out there and they're they're run through the screening thing. That's based on just a questionnaire. So I I still don't understand, and I again, I. I don't know why we would wait until Friday. That's just an arbitrary thing. That's, you know, it's actually. Almost three weeks past when the request was made, so it's not like this request is being made today and needs to be considered for three days.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, um, so. I uh what 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 Dr. Pace had just mentioned about um opening up and allowing. Um, the locals to actually. You know, view if needed when it comes to real estate and then um submit for a request for for out of towners to come and conduct real estate. But those are the type of things that they the Blue Collar Committee has been talking about. Um, and that that would be a good option. It just needs to happen and and it continue to happen. And um, I I didn't know that there was a situation where people were denied or vice versa. Um, that Supervisor Brown had brought up, and that's kind of worries me too because I hate to see. Uh, the discouragement like how like we had those problems with uh when it came to cannabis and we were allowing certain things and other. Like how, like we had those problems with, uh, when it came to cannabis and we were allowing certain things and other people were circumventing or whatever. So, um, if it does happen, in, in whether it happens now or Friday, I understand that there needs to be, uh, some sort of formality to, you know, to prepare, um, when it comes to either, uh, you know, getting the word out that we're going to, we're going to allow businesses to start conducting and opening, um, in certain aspects to ensure that this COVID safe. Um, but either way, I just want to make sure it's consistent in that we don't, in that what we do scale, that there is a scale back measure, of course. Um, there's, there's, there was a good discussion that we had in, in the committee meeting that you conducted, Dr. Pace, on Friday. And so it seemed that a lot of the concerns that were brought forward from the blue collar committee were, were addressed. And, uh, it seemed that they were addressed without me even kind of implementing them. And so I see the email that, uh, one of, one of the representatives sent to me, you had already covered it. So I think that helps, but I just want to make sure that, um, you know, that we're, we're, if we're allowing real estate or if we're allowing people to do haircuts, I don't know if that's one of them. Um, those, those business owners have a lot of measures in place that will ensure the safety of their customers and themselves. Um, none of them are asking or be, I, I don't feel as any of them are similar to the folks that you see on the media protesting. They're not like that. They're trying to just make sure that they're safe, open up business, provide other options for people that are already out in the community, kind of doing some of those things, um, and, and not having options to, to conduct commerce. And so, um, I'm glad to see that you're, you're open to doing this, these types of things. And, uh, you know, I, I heard earlier, you said another thing about, um, allowing the COVID to spread into the community that, um, or something to that effect. And, um, that, that's kind of scary, but at the same time, I know that that's, that's part of the, that's part of the process. Um, in, in essence, allowing this to open, we do that. Um, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but at the same time, it's one of your, it's one of the things you, you stated that needs to happen. So, um, or not needs to happen, but it's part of the process. So, um, that's kind of what I have from my notes. I might have something later, but, um, yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
I see that, I see that Dr. Pace was going to respond and wondering if he can also respond with the makeup of the.
It froze, Bruno.
So, yeah, a couple of things, a couple of points brought up there that were really helpful. Um, Supervisor Crandall, uh, the, coming out of that blue collar committee and the, the letter that Supervisor Brown's talking about is extremely helpful for me to determine the next steps. And so, you know, I think we basically put almost everything that was in that letter from the blue collar committee in effect in this first round that I'm talking about that will happen later this week. And, um, uh, the, uh, so that's, and I would encourage you the next time you need to basically start thinking about the next layer that you would be interested in doing and how we could do that with the different businesses. There was one of the, the issues which was like hairdressing and cosmetology and all that. And my understanding is the governor's, the, the state law is not allowing that at this point. But those are obviously one of the first things that could go because it's just one-on-one and people could mask and everything. And then Supervisor Sabatier's, um, question about the makeup of the committee. It's Supervisor Simon, Supervisor Crandall, um, Lars Ewing, who's planning, uh, Anita for county council, Carol Hutchison, the CAO, um, representatives from each of the cities, Alan Flora and Margaret Silveira, uh, Sheriff Martin. I think that's it. Denise and myself from the health department. And I think that's everybody. Um, the idea was, was to have it be sort of the kind of the, uh, county and city folks that are in the kind of representing constituencies out there. And then my interest is to have other groups like the blue collar committee, or we're meeting with some of the folks that are involved with the lake tomorrow. And maybe I'm trying to connect with the tribes and have a tribal meeting. And any other, you know, so if churches want to meet and then write a proposal or give some feedback about what they would see, uh, would be a reasonable way forward. That's because I agree, you know, these are the experts, you know, the real estate folks did a great job in, in what they were laying out. It's just trying to, um, bring it, trying to implement it is, is always a little tricky sometimes. And so, so that's, that's kind of what the process is, the way I'm looking at it, how to navigate it with, with the regional area and the, and the state rules and the needs of the county.
Mr. Chair, jump in. There, there was one other member of the working group that, that Dr. Pace missed and it's Brock Falkenberger Superintendent.
Okay. Thank you very much, Carol. Thank you, Dr. Pace. Appreciate the information.
I'm going to throw one more thing if I could.
No, what's that? Hold on. I'll, I'll call on you when it's time to talk.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, yeah. So, uh, you know, obviously we've heard from the other four board members. I would just like to go down a list of kind of some of the things, uh, Dr. Pace, appreciate the hard work. I know you're being pulled in a million different directions from businesses, uh, board members, everything on what we should do. So I'm glad we're having this discussion today. I will let you know some of the information that was provided on Friday when we'll talk about the recreation opportunities, especially with the lake for our locals and other things. Um, I think that's a good first step on how we, um, start to open this thing up slowly but surely. Um, I, I think that's a good conversation that we have. I think the caveat all through this thing, the one concern I have with everything, obviously, and I think I bring it up quite a bit each week is, is as we do this, is the conversation of masks. People leaving their homes, making sure they have masks on. I know we're encouraging that right now, but each and every day, if you just go out to the stores and opportunities, there's probably about a 50%. Um, you know, 50% of the people are actually adhering to that. A lot of folks don't use masks still. They're out moving around in the public. The concern is not for them, obviously, it could be them, someone else they're affecting or things like that. So I have a real concern, uh, that we got to have a real conversation, whether or not, um, you know, we require those masks as you're leaving the homes as we're opening things up. Ultimately, I understand the herd, you know, uh, immunity type of thing that you're talking about needs to happen. But it, it'd be nice, we could really control that with how people are spreading it when they're outside with having their face covered. So I think that's one issue, but I completely agree with the recreational only. As far as the real estate, um, I, I, I did see the letter. I did see the conversations you were having. Uh, I think locals only to start with is good, but there's also, like you said, opening things up is a real challenge because what you don't want to have even for a local is someone showing a home with people that are living in it. Now you're bringing people into an environment. And I know a couple of instances happened down here. I know at least one of my family members that was happening to, uh, where they wanted to show a home, but they had a whole family isolating in that home. And now they're like, well, we want to bring someone to your home. Well, you can't do that, you know, right now that would be, I, I just don't think that would be a right way to do it. So I agree with, um, helping out the real estate folks as much as possible, but also having your kind of thumb, public health officer's thumb on how it operates, I think is still something that needs to happen. But we do need to open it up as much as possible. And I think some of the requirements and other things they put together, they would be doing their best practices. Seem like they're really trying to do everything they can to help encourage both whether it's in county or out of county business being as safe as possible. Um, the other question I had, uh, on the sewage test that it came through, I appreciate your explanation today. I know there was a lot of interest last week on that. I'm glad that we are doing it as a county. But my question would be, I do know, especially down here in my district, uh, there are other service districts that do have sewers. So, uh, let's just talk Hidden Valley, uh, uh, Community Service District. There is a septic system there for that residence. Are we going to reach out to those, uh, private industry ones also, uh, and see if they could do some testing? Just so we could get more data, more information on what's going on around the county. I know we've done four, but I just, I, I wonder what your thoughts on that. Um, the other thing too, as we're talking about this, this is more for the community. Everything that we're doing here is the information we have to keep our community, our constituents safe as we move through this. I believe we are doing the right thing. I know we won't know the data until everything passes, but I believe the decisions we've made have saved lives at this point here in Lake County, and that was the ultimate goal. As we reopen this thing, which we are pushing towards slowly but surely as this goes, it could escalate. I just want everyone to understand, whether it's the blue collar committee, all business owners, everything. If this thing escalates, it could even be locked down, uh, tighter than when it was in the beginning. And, um, I just want to get that out there and make sure that people understand as we move forward through this process, uh, we clearly hear and understand the economic impact that is happening to our businesses. Uh, but we also understand, uh, on the other end, uh, the ultimate loss of life is what we're trying to prevent here and an overwhelming of our, uh, medical, uh, facilities. And as we do that, it's going to be a step process. And I'm glad that we're having the conversation today, whether it happens today or the 25th. Um, you know, the 25th is, is fine with me. I, I believe in the coordination and the cooperation as we, we kind of went through the process, uh, in the beginning. And eventually, yeah, it would be great to get to that, uh, you know, just the state requirements, uh, here, maybe in the next couple, two, three weeks or whenever you propose to come back with that. Um, but at this point, I think those are kind of my comments along the lines. I appreciate having the opportunity to be in on the Friday meetings. I think there's a lot of general discussion that really will benefit the entire community as we bring it back. And, um, that, those are kind of my points. So if we could answer maybe a couple on the, the masks, the sewage and, um, you know, those types of things, I greatly appreciate it.
Great. Uh, well, thanks. And, uh, so I think the mask is a really important point. Um, the way, so Sonoma County now has a mandatory mask order. I think, uh, Mendocino is going that direction. What, the way I'm thinking about it is probably what we're going to need to do is when we get to the point where we're opening up businesses more, then we'll probably need to go to some kind of at least mandatory masking inside the businesses or something like that. So for example, if we open up outdoor restaurant seating and they have to stay six feet apart, which might be the first step, but people would have to wear masks there to be able to do that. And then the, you know, so I think, uh, just, I don't know. I, I'm a little reluctant to go to a mandatory masking over the whole county because for one thing, our density is less than other areas. The second thing is, you know, you have to be able to get masks. I mean, you can use bandanas or other things, but it's, it's, it's a little problematic to force people to wear masks if there's not, they're not really available. And I think really the point of this is in the certain specific areas, indoor dining, indoor stores, to make it mandatory in those kinds of settings, but not necessarily in the whole public. And that way the stores should be, um, requiring people when they get in or not let them in or things like that. So that's kind of the way I'm thinking about it, but you know, open to discussion. Other places are doing it a little more blanket order. Um, and then the second question was the sewage. Um, the, uh, you know, the utility of this is really to see, to kind of get a, it's another data point to see what's going on in the community. And so it, just the sewage by itself, uh, the results don't really tell us that much, but they make us aware of what the community in likelihood of in community infection is. And, um, I think we know that now. It's, it's out there. Uh, whether it's, whether we get a positive result in a specific, uh, small area or not, doesn't really help us that much, I think. That what will really help us there is to get better testing. So that way we, what I really want to do is use the, this monitoring of the sewage as just a way to see, get a sense of what's going on, but what the, the, there was the, um, the, uh, efforts that I really want to put into is getting better testing so that in that community where you're talking about, we could go out and test people that have some mild symptoms and see if they're positive or not. That's really the, the, on an individual level, that's the important thing. On a community level, the, the sewage can help us to just get a sense. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but that's kind of the way I'm thinking about it. And you have a question? I think you have one more.
Well, it was, uh, the masks, I think you've answered the recreational. No, I, I, those are, um, ah, those are the main points. I think we're moving in the right direction with the conversation here. But, uh, yeah, I appreciate those answers. Um, I just brought up, uh, the sewage testing, obviously, because it was an independent, uh, area out there. I don't think it costs too much. So, um, was just looking at that as a, as a concern when they're saying it was tested. So appreciate your answer, uh, on that one. Um, as we move forward, I agree with you, the testing, uh, seems to be the thing that everybody is working on. I'm encouraged to hear that they have the, uh, the Abbott machine. I think that is how you say it, right? Uh, both in Mendocino and, uh, tribal health, having that opportunity here locally. Well, hopefully, uh, there can be some coordination that happens there. Um, it sounds like at least you guys are talking about it. So that's excellent, uh, for our small community here. Okay. Uh, go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
So again, I, and I, and I can, you know, again, I can count to three, so I'm pretty sure I'm outnumbered on this, but I'm going to throw it out there again, because I still have not heard any logical reason, any factual reason why we couldn't just do this now and open this up without contingencies on locals or, you know, out of town people, you know, it, it, it doesn't make sense to me. And this, this, uh, scenario that you gave of people having occupied houses and exposing them, well, nobody can just come into their house without them wanting them to. So if somebody lives in a home and they don't want, come somebody from out of county or local coming into their house, they can express that. So the, you know, right now, the, the issue is with vacant houses, but if somebody wants to sell their house and they want to assume the risk of somebody coming into their house after they've made sure that they're screened, what do we care? What do we know better than they do? So I, I just, I think that, I, I think we've gotten too restrictive for too long without justification. And, um, it, it's, it's not, it's not working out. So, um, I'm just asking that that be reconsidered. I don't want to wait for another Friday. This will be four Fridays that we've waited. And, uh, at least it'll be the third Friday since I sent the, the letter. And, and that was related to, um, Tina asked early about our restrictions. Well, our restrictions go well beyond the lake for, for recreational activities. It's our parks, uh, the golf courses, the golf courses are privately owned. They could open up to locals easily enough, um, with restrictions where they're not riding carts together. They, you know, the, the, the operator, this was within the letter that I sent to Dr. Pace, the operators could, uh, identify the, um, the residency of somebody and tell them whether or not, yes, you can be here, yes, you can't, or no, you can't. And they can have their, uh, have their, the right to keep that open revoked if they violate that. Uh, people just want to get out and walk. What do we care if they're out walking with a golf club and hitting, hitting the balls around a little bit? You know, this is, these are things that are just, they don't need to be in place, in my opinion. They could be lifted immediately. I appreciate more, because I, I, I've gone, you know, I feel like I've got to respond to four different, you know, at least three. And so, you know, I probably speak three or four times more than everybody else, but I feel strongly about this and nobody's laying out any facts. This is all, this is all, you know, hypothesis. Everything's hypothesis here.
Well, there's no hypothesis. Uh, there are over 40,000 deaths in this country at this point from COVID-19. I think if Dr. Pace, we talked about the deaths that are happening here, uh, in California, um, in our neighboring counties, um, to the south of us, obviously throughout the state. So it's not hypothesis.
It is.
This is not being done, uh, without no evidence of this COVID-19.
Yeah.
Being one of the, you know, a very deadly pandemic throughout the world. So.
If we're not seeing it.
That is fact.
It's not a fact. It's not a fact. It's not a fact that this is greater than everything else. You're not showing me where it's a, where it's, the more people die from doctors' mistakes than die from the COVID. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of evidence to that.
Heard that argument many, many different times, uh, you know, I, I just, I disagree with you. Um, and I think most of the public health officials and doctors in this country will agree with you. So, uh, or disagree with you.
Of course they'll disagree.
Yeah. Well, they'll definitely disagree. So, um, as we move through that process, um, this is just something we got to do. So appreciate your opinion. And that's what it is, an opinion. All right. Well, go ahead and open it up. Are there any more questions for Dr. Pace? Go ahead, Bruno. You're on mute still, Bruno.
Sorry, not used to that. Um, Dr. Pace, thank you for, uh, filling in, for, uh, letting me know who is on that panel. Uh, I appreciate the work group, um, but I do share some of the sentiments that Supervisor Brown has that I, I, we, we all have a responsibility in how we maneuver through this. Uh, I think that the work group will provide some guidance and some, uh, assistance. Um, but I think that we're all getting the emails here. We're all getting the phone calls here as far as some of the frustration, some of the concern. Some people are, some people are very realistically afraid of what could happen because of the virus. And others are calling us because they're very realistically afraid of, uh, what their finances may look like in the near future. I mean, we, we all know that, uh, um, we, we've all attempted to help some people, uh, in, in our districts or out of our districts to get access to the paycheck. in in our districts or out of our districts to get access to the paycheck protection program. And yet what we're learning is that the majority, the vast majority were denied, and it all went to much larger businesses than what everyone anticipated it should go to. So we have a lot of people that were kind of shown a bit of light at the end of the tunnel, and here it is, and then all of a sudden, shut off. And so I think that there's some very real frustrations when it comes to that. We we have to be real with ourselves that where there is essential business, there's certain questions as to why is that safe versus others? I get it why it's essential. Obviously, you need to have food, you need to have grocery stores, but the amount of people in the parking lot, the amount of people within the stores, you go to places like a hardware store, it it's packed. And so for some reason, we're 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 less concerned with what was decided as essential versus the the non-essential. This is what I propose, and I'm looking to see, I I just, I was listening in with one ear while working on the other with my fingers to type up a letter. I I I think my my opinion is I'm nervous about what the state is going to do. And I think that we need to take back some control because I'm worried the state's going to look at what's best for us while they're looking at where all the population is. We are vastly different, as you said, Dr. Pace. We don't really necessarily want to go for a masked order because we have such wide open space and such a low density of population in the area. That that's not the case when it comes to the Bay Area, even Sonoma, or LA and things like that. And so I'm really worried about the state making a, I understand where we started. I appreciate where we started. And I think that we have learned a lot through the process. We have gained a lot through the process in the sense that we have a better understanding how to maneuver through this. I think even the businesses that want to open are very concerned about the health issues that could come from not practicing safe social distancing. And I I think that what I want to offer is that we take up an extra item for a letter to Governor Newsom that says, please let the counties as individuals take control on how we reopen and work through the reactivation of our economy. Number one priority should be the health of our individuals, because without the health, there is no business, period. But number two, if we don't figure out how to how to make it work for us the way Lake County needs to work, then we may be stuck with what the state mandates and we may just, we might see people like the Bay Area prosper while we're stuck because it doesn't quite fit within the realm. You know, you can't, for instance, and not saying this is going to happen, but you can't say you can't travel further than two miles to go get what you need. We need to travel much further. Most people have, most people want to go to Walmart. Most people have a grocery store that's at least 10 miles away. It's not, doesn't work that way. So I don't want to see rules and regulations on how to reopen an economy work for the entire state of California. I want it to work for us. So I'm offering that we have an extra item where we request that the governor give us through elected officials and through public health officer guidance on how to best move forward. And that all we receive from the state is a standardized guidance on safety precautions for dealing with COVID-19, which is still here. It's not going away. It's going to continue, but we know, we've learned how to flatten the curve. I think now that we've been trained for it, we can move forward on our own and make things work for us. But right now, we're waiting on the 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 big guy in the sky to tell us when we can move forward. And and I think that between Modoc County that has zero and us that have had six and LA that's had thousands, it's just not a statewide mandate that can happen to figure out how we move forward. And I think that our minds and our accountability to the people that live here in Lake County should be making some of those decisions and not waiting for the state to tell us how to do it. So I drafted a quick letter. It's a really, it's probably a bad letter because I was trying to do two things at once. But I would like for us to discuss asking for us to have that level of control rather than waiting on the governor to make those decisions for us.
Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, Bruno brought a really good, that was very good, Bruno. Thank you for for bringing that letter out. I was going to say something before that, and all I was going to say is that, you know, Dr. Pace, thank you for what you're doing. You know, I we we understand that this is a very heavyweight to carry right now. And I do appreciate a lot of the discussion that we had in the meeting Friday. We just, you know, I feel other having other options for folks to conduct business in a safe manner shouldn't be a problem because people that are out are out and about as it is right now anyhow. And I've noticed that myself, because I've had to be out. There's certain things I have to do in regard to to work as well. If you if you choose to do it sooner rather than later, that helps. But I understand the need for incremental development. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of folks that are susceptible. You know, my mother's one of them. I wouldn't want her out and about. And some folks aren't going to be going out. They're going to shelter in place because they're they're really concerned about the coronavirus. There's folks that aren't afraid of it, and so they want to be out. Business and doing it in a safe manner, you know, I I I think that that's fine. And I think that you've already talked about doing a lot of what, you know, most of the businesses wanted anyhow. So I felt I felt like a broken record. Anyhow, thanks.
Okay, Dr. Pace, I don't know if you have any comments, any more comments at this point?
No, I mean, I think it's, I really appreciate this conversation. It's helpful for me to understand what you all see as the needs. And, you know, my primary concern is the is the health and the public health. But it's it's definitely people losing their income and being stuck in the house forever and not getting any outlets is not a good thing for anybody. And so to be able to loosen up in ways that are reasonable and safe are really what we want to do. And I'll, you know, I'll get to work on this order and see, see if we can get it out before Friday. It's a, you know, it's a little bit of a process to get to weave it through the the different places it has to go. But Supervisor Brown's right, there's nothing magic about Friday. It's a, you know, I wanted to have this conversation with you all today and to to move forward from there. And so so I'll get working on it, and we'll see what we can do.
Excellent. Supervisor Scotty?
And and I just wanted to make a statement, and I I don't believe I've said this to Dr. Pace. I've had a few emails back and forth with him, and I appreciate the communication and the responses that I received from him. I just wanted to say, I I'm not, at this moment in time, with the numbers that we're seeing, I I too am not in favor of an order for masks. And my number one reason is this, how are we going to enforce that? And if we see 50 people in a grocery store without masks or in a grocery parking lot, grocery store parking lot, are we going to find all 50 people? Are we going to pick and choose who we're going to find? I just don't see that as being enforceable. And and all it's going to do, I think, is upset people more. I think if people feel unsafe, they will be safe and they will wear masks, as we're seeing some people doing right now. And I think that we need to continue with our highly recommended. I I I appreciate your tactics and moving in that direction rather than going with a order that this is what you have to do. There there's a certain level of control that we just have to admit that we don't have, and we can only suggest things and and try to get people to act in the correct way. So I just wanted to say that. But I I am just, again, still looking for if you're interested in having a conversation about the letter I just wrote as far as an extra item.
You know, I I I would be in favor of bringing it up for for next week, so we'd have time to look at it, make sure the letter's drafted, you know, in the best way. That that's my thoughts on it.
I agree to that. I think making crafting a proper letter and then coming back next week would be would be better.
So if I'm hearing that correctly, then three of us are willing to discuss this letter to to have, to see if Governor Newsom would be willing to give us the authority on how we move forward past the shelter in place.
Supervisor Brown?
So we have another, we have another item on at one o'clock. And, I mean, it doesn't sound like the letter is that complicated. I don't see why we couldn't take it up as an extra and then let Bruno finish crafting it and submit it to us before the end of the day. I mean, we're going to be here for a while. And I think this is essential to get this thing out as quickly as possible. It doesn't, it doesn't do us any good.
Send it to Carol Hutchinson.
Okay, I don't think it does us any good to wait until the order is lifted before we send it. I think it's essential now, it's definitely timely. So I would be willing to look at it.
Supervisors, when you come?
If I could just respond real quick, though, you know, Dr. Pace has laid it very clear. I we don't, you know, at least what I've seen too, and I can't speak for the governor, but it doesn't seem like anything is going to be lifted in the next couple of weeks here in the state of California. So, you know, saying it's going, we wait before it's lifted. We know the 28th isn't because their current order goes out into May sometimes, so.
But we also know how long it takes for the governor and the rest of the state to react to anything. So I'm not, I I I think if you want to vote on that, I would be happy to vote on that right now. I think it requires the vote. If three members don't want it, then they don't want it.
Supervisors, I would encourage you to finish the item you're on. And then you could go back to the the extra agenda and decide if you want to take this up and then take it up if you decide that. However, Carolyn Purdy is telling me that once the meeting has begun, we give any way to attach it to Granica so the public can see it. So I just want you to consider that, but when you get to that point. But again, we have lots of public comment waiting on to be shared in response to Dr. Pace's report. So my advice would be this item and then go go to that.
All right, Supervisor Scott, I know you had your hand up one minute.
It was about the letter, so I'll wait.
Okay. All right, if there's no more questions at this point for Dr. Pace, we're going to go ahead and open it up. And I would like to start with, Carol, I'd like to start with Brian Martin, our sheriff. He's had his hand up here on the screen for a while. I want to go to public input, but if we could start with Brian Martin, I would greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. So I'm I'm in favor of getting things back to normal as as quickly as possible, but I I recognize there's a balance in keeping it as safe as possible. So we've we've had these discussions amongst our working group. Dr. Pace is accurate. I understand Supervisor Brown's concern about why we went till Friday. What I'll tell you is that we would want a couple of days to talk about how this thing's going to get worked out. Simply, particularly, we're talking about some of these allowing our locals to do certain things, but prohibiting people that are from out of town to not do those same things. As law enforcement, we have an obligation to respect everyone's constitutional rights. And we're talking about taking certain enforcement actions, allowing certain people liberties and freedoms because of where they live. I think that just opens up a door for some discrimination complaints, some equal protection issues and those things. So, you know, rather than just simply saying, all right, everybody but locals, or anybody but non-locals can do this, we need some more time to discuss that. So I I do think we need at least a couple more days to try to get things sorted out rather than just closing this meeting and saying, ali-ali, auction free. As far as whether or not this is working, we've seen, you know, we've seen what happens here. We don't, I I think, I feel very strongly that the steps that we took early on helped us get to where we're at. I don't know that the data is very accurate, especially given what's happened with the sewer treatment stuff. But what I can tell you, we're looking at numbers here, just in this board discussion. We talked about the death rate across the state, and, you know, there's opinions on both sides and whether or not it's from coronavirus or not. But what I can tell you here in Lake County, I looked at the time period from February 1st to April 20th of 2019, which was last year, and looked at how many coroner investigations that we had. And those are the unattended deaths, suspicious deaths, accidental deaths. Coronavirus deaths would probably fall under that, whether or not they're actually reported or such. But during that timeframe, we had 89. And during the same timeframe during 2020, we had 78. So 10% less during the same time period when last year we weren't under this pandemic compared to what we have now. So I don't know if that is significant. I'm just telling you what our numbers show here at the sheriff's office. As far as taking steps to ease restrictions, I like the recreational opportunities idea. I like the idea of getting some businesses up and running, because we do need to, there needs to come a time where you start getting back to normal. And I mentioned in the in the communication yesterday about maybe opening parks, particularly the Highland Springs range. From a from a sheriff's standpoint, we have a lot of CCW holders that are out there that whose CCWs have expired. There is no provision to simply extend those without them going through the required training. And I want to make sure that our people that are exercising their lawful rights to carry firearms are staying lawful and not not trying to follow the law because of something that we're mandating on them. So with that, you know, I I I'd like to certainly, I'm appreciative of the conversation that we're starting to look at easing restrictions, and I I support that. I don't have a vote, but that's my thought.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Thank you. Supervisor Brown?
So in in response to the sheriff, you know, again, you know, it's, no one can really explain to me how we can shut everything down overnight, yet it takes days to to figure out how we're going to open it back up. I I think that it's much simpler than that. I I just can't believe that, you know, we're already, you know, they're enforcing things, it's going to be less to enforce. And so it's, you know, it just makes sense to me that it's actually less work to do. And, you know, I get the working group, but I also get that it's heavily weighted towards bureaucrats that are still getting paid while the rest of the world that we're making these decisions for don't get paid. And they need to get out of their house, and they need to get the exercise. And they, you know, two more days, that's, where are we at, 31 days, 32 days now? What are we at? I don't even, I don't even know, it's been so damn long. But, you know, here we're going on to 34 days, by the 35 days by the time we get around to it. I I think, I think it's important enough that maybe the rest of the day could be spent figuring out how to get, make this happen. I don't see that that's, this isn't days and days. This is probably an hour, hour-long meeting would get this resolved.
All right, Jake, I know that was the only hand that I saw up in the room. We'll go ahead and go to Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so I have quite a bit of public comment, and and I want, I I've kind of grouped it together in like categories with the hope that that the response to it could be most efficient. And so several of these things are things that the sheriff may want to weigh in on as well as the health officer or or even your board. And so this is a question that's been asked before, but it's been asked again. And to make sure the public understands the answer, I'll go ahead and ask it because it was submitted specifically for today's meeting. The question comes from Sarah Delk, and it is, is there a plan in place for how fire evacuations will be handled if a fire were to break out during the shelter in place orders? Mr. Sheriff?
Yes, our our fire evacuation protocol would probably remain the same. I I hope that the question isn't being posed because people think we're going to enforce this shelter in place while we're trying to evacuate the county. Obviously, if there's an imminent danger of fire and life-threatening danger, we're going to tell people to get out. So I I'm not sure why why that would be a question for somebody. We we wouldn't tell people to stay in their house because of coronavirus while there's a fire coming down the hill. So our evacuation plans are going to follow what the evacuation plans were prior to coronavirus. We're encouraging people to be ready in the event that an evacuation is necessary. As we get closer to fire season, we'll be encouraging people to make their personal readiness plans. And not a lot of that has changed. So if if there's thought that we're going to not allow people to evacuate because we have a shelter in place, that's just simply not a thing.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Anything further from anybody else on that one before I move on?
Dr. Pace?
Yeah, you know, I think one of the questions that's going to be, I think there's a, there's definitely an anxiety about what's going to happen with the overlapping of the coronavirus and if we have PSPSs or if we have fires and evacuations. And I think the sheltering part will will look different. I mean, I agree with the sheriff, the evacuation part, it makes, I mean, that, you know, you just got to get out. But the sheltering people are going to have to really think through this in a different way. And how do we shelter people? I mean, you know, the worst possible thing is to stick 200 people in a big room together. And so we're going to have to, if if it looks like as the fire season starts coming that we're going to have to be planning for the possibilities of evacuation. for the possibilities of evacuation, I think the sheltering part will be a little bit different.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the next set of two questions pertains to concern about people moving around the county, you know, mobility, and then also people coming from out of the area. And if it works for you, I'll read them both. And Dr. Pace may want to respond and the sheriff may also want to add to the response because it's, some of it relates to what is possible with enforcement efforts. So the first, both of these questions come from David Van Cleve. And David asks, first of all, I have contacted multiple agencies regarding the senseless behavior of Facebook groups such as Lakes List, Lake County Buy and Sell, and Hidden Valley Lake Exchange, and Lake Ports Lists. These groups have thousands of people that post items for sale throughout the county. The majority of these posts are enticing residents to travel across the county to purchase non-essential items. It seems to go against all county orders requiring social distance and essential travel only. This kind of reckless disregard for human safety needs to be temporarily halted in order to prevent further spread of the virus. I recommend that county officials contact the administrators of these groups or Facebook directly and mandate either restrictive postings or a temporary ban on any items for sale. What are you going to do with this situation to help keep the public safe from such careless behavior? And then the second question, again, also about people being mobile within the county, comes from the same person, David Van Cleve. I personally have seen many non-residents traveling to Lake County to stay at their vacation homes. This is literally spelled out in the governor's shelter in place order as a no-no. What are you going to do to prevent such radical dangerous behavior? Is there a number the public can call to report such activity? Many residents that live permanently, many residents that permanently live in this county know exactly what homes belong to county residents and what homes belong to out-of-county vacationers. Also, I've told the sheriff department that every weekend, there's a boat that travels to an island. I believe it's called Fruit Island, directly across from Windflower Point with weekend visitors from another county. The property is owned by Bernice Roca of El Dorado Hills, California. I can see the people from my house. They usually have about five people exiting the boat. They show up every Friday and leave on Sunday, again, going directly against the lake closure order and the shelter in place order. It doesn't seem very difficult to send a marine patrol out to the residents to inform them that they are not being compliant. After all, marine patrol shouldn't really have anything else to do other than patrol. Speaking of marine patrol, it seems that they are only patrolling Monday through Friday. Why is this? Last weekend, I watched four boats and two kayakers cruise the lake in total disregard of the lake closure order. Even watched one boat in Canuck Bay pull an Intertuber around. When contacting sheriff, whose substation is literally 500 yards from where the boating was happening, I was told they would send someone out to check. However, I never witnessed a sheriff boat driving around. And yes, I was watching the entire time because I've literally been sequestered in my house for the last five weeks and have had nothing to do. Pretty disappointing behavior from both the inconsiderate boaters and the lack of law enforcement on the sheriff's part. With ensuing warm weather, the lake violations order will only, lake order violations will only get worse. I'm very proud of our county's extremely proactive and successful approach at preventing a major outbreak of the virus in this community. However, they need to keep it up because the threat is still out there. You're either part of the solution or you're part of the problem. There's no in-between. So, yeah, I'll leave that up to Dr. Pace and the sheriff.
Well, I mean, you know, I think we are really wanting people to shelter in place and to not cross county lines. That's the order. That seems to be what works. That seems to be what prevents, what slows the transmission. And, you know, enforcing that is tricky if people own property up here. We are not really able to prevent them from coming up to property they own. We have put out some strong messaging to the larger community about encouraging people to stay home and, you know, and not cross county lines to go vacationing. Again, like I said earlier, this is, this is an issue in a lot of counties, a lot of the rural, beautiful counties that people like to travel to. They're feeling pressure from the, you know, the vacation travelers. We've done, that's, that's the rationale for limiting the hotels and Airbnbs, et cetera. But I'm sure people are figuring out ways to get around it. And, you know, it's a little bit of part, I, I think of it as, as part of the social contract to try to look out for your neighbors and the other folks in the county. But then there is an enforcement piece, and so maybe the sheriff wants to talk about that.
Sure, absolutely. So there was a lot. I don't know if I covered, I wrote everything down here. I was trying to keep notes, but I don't know if I'll be able to respond adequately to everything that was covered. But I'm going to start with the, the policing of social media, Facebook posts and those groups have red their heads. A lot of what you're, you're frustrated about is a lack of personnel. We just, we don't have personnel available to monitor the internet and try to police people's speech and groups and advertisements. I, I just, you know, in making decisions, we have to triage what we do and that is just is not at the top of the priority list. As far as people making bad decisions and acting carelessly, people do that. The Just Say No campaign was, was brought about just because of that. So, you know, there's going to be people that disobey the rules and it's up to us to decide how we appropriately deploy the limited resources that we have. As far as the boat patrol calls, you know, again, limited personnel to run this. I don't have a full coast guard. We staff that with one full-time person who happens to be off work for, for some serious reasons for the foreseeable future. And the rest of our staff comes to us by way of part-timers who spend most of their time out there in the summer when, when we're at our busiest time of the year. So the Monday through Friday, yeah, that's absolutely accurate. It requires an overtime call-out to somebody who may be busy and may have to take care of personal things on a weekend. So unfortunately, yeah, we don't have enough staffing to do a lot of the things that the, the author of this public comment would like to see done. As Dr. Pace said, a lot of this is a social contract. We're putting these rules in place with the hope that people will do the right thing, but we also realize that not everybody does the right thing. If everybody did the right thing, the emblem behind my head would probably look different because I have a different job. So please understand that when we deploy our resources, we have a limited amount of resources. We have a little bit, limited amount of staffing. And some of the things that, that may get in your craw because you're stuck at home and it's right in front of your face in the grand scheme of things, when we're dealing with other things throughout the county, may not be as important. You just, you simply may not see it. So I don't know if I covered everything. What I'll ask is, Madam CAO, to please email me that public comment. If there's something else I need to respond directly to that person, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, I will. Did anyone else have anything on that?
Supervisor Scotty?
I will just say the, the best way to stay safe is to protect yourself and you can't, just like we can't control everybody with the recommendations or the orders that we put into place, just make sure that you protect yourself.
Okay, Mr. Chair, moving on. There is, this next comment is, is input from a citizen about testing. And this one came in too late for last week. And I just want to let the public know that if, since these reports are ongoing, if we get your complaint too late, too late for the current meeting, we'll carry it over to the next meeting as, as we have this one, as long as these reports are going on. So this message, this piece of input comes from Georgina Lane and it's about testing. She's suggesting a limited coronavirus test program for, for Lake County. She says that according to the CDC, because of limited testing availability at this time, it's desirable to locate clusters of infected people to quarantine them and limit the further spread of the virus. Since the virus is carried into Lake County from other locations, people who enter the county are in a significant way to determine who may be infected and thereby provide tracking for possible cluster infections. The testing goals, one, to provide limited community testing. Two, to provide infection information that can be scaled up to evaluate the extent of infection in Lake County. Three, to reassure Lake County citizens of probable risk of infection. Four, provide the board of directors with information to make decisions about the opening of schools and businesses in Lake County. Why test now? In order to open up some portion of community life in Lake County, it is desirable to have an informed knowledge of the extent of possible COVID inspections in the county. What kind of test? A limited scalable test that would utilize a minimum of test kits available to the county. Who performs the tests? The tests would be performed using local hospital personnel under the direction of the county health officer, Dr. Pace. Testing requirements, as soon as adequate test kits are available and assembly of people and logistics are available. Who to test? Some portion of daily commuters determined from outside the county to their homes in Lake County. When to test? During commuters' return to Lake County at the end of the day. Testing can be done on one day for all locations or spread over several days for different locations. How to get the most significant information? Testing to be performed with a to-be-determined supply of test kits for each of the three highway locations. And so she's referring to one location on 29 and two locations on Highway 20. Quantities of commuters at each test location to be determined from CHP or Caltrans. How to ensure tests are mostly commuters? Testing would be limited to one or two hours at each location to reduce other citizens from diluting test results. Commuters will probably call friends and inform about tests. Respectfully submitted by Georgina Lane.
Well, so that's a, you know, very interesting strategy. That's what, that's kind of the way we're thinking about things right now, trying to target the tests to where it's most useful. The main, basically what she's outlining is exactly what we're doing, which is trying to find clusters, trying to find the people that are highest risk, test them, and then test the, the contacts around them to see if there's any kind of spread and then contain that. It's interesting to think about bringing in people, testing people that are coming in from out of the county as commuters because we are starting to test some of the workers at the nursing homes that are asymptomatic just to test them because that's been a place that's a big concern and, and in other counties. And so we're starting to test a few people there. I think the sheriff has a testing strategy at the jail to, to test people there just to make sure that there's no undetected asymptomatic people in the jail. You know, so this sort of strategy is exactly what's being done and being started. The main issue, the main problem has been the lack of test sampling materials. And we're, you know, heavily working on that. And a lot of places are starting to talk about just testing asymptomatic people kind of in a surveillance strategy. But that's a, that's a great idea to think about, just focusing on the, on the commuter. So once we get the testing capabilities, we may want to think about that. Thank you.
Okay, good. Continue, Carol. Carol?
Thank you. So we've talked about whether or not the county will consider an order to require masking in public, and that's what this next question is about. So the person says, are there, oh, excuse me, the person again on this one is David Van Cleve. And Mr. Van Cleve says, are there any plans to implement an order requiring masks to be worn by anyone while in public, including public buildings? On April 17th, Sonoma County implemented the order and it seems to be a very proactive approach that's relatively easy for everyone to follow and would help considerably in flattening the curve. While I understand medical masks such as N95 and surgical masks aren't available to everyone, there are many adequate effective alternatives for masks such as bandanas, scarves, cotton cloth masks, shop towels. Since there are presumably many people that are asymptomatic, any mask that would help with the prevention of droplet protection, something Dr. Pace should be able to confirm. So that is from David Van Cleve.
Right, so the masking question is a really good one. Those are good points you're bringing up there that, again, the masks are cloth face coverings generally now that are being recommended. And they don't necessarily protect you, but they protect the other people. If you're in the early phase of viral transmission where you don't have symptoms or if you're one of the asymptomatic people, but you're, you're shedding virus, it protects the people around you. So I agree, it's a, it's a very good way to slow the transmission through the community. And, you know, we talked about the kind of making it mandatory across, across the whole public. We are, all the hospitals, the nursing facilities and the clinics are masking now when all the workers there. So in the high-risk kind of medical places, as far as, my understanding is they're all masking people now. We're strongly recommending that they do that in the grocery stores. And I suspect what will happen here is that once we move into the next phase of restriction lifting, where we let some more businesses operate, that we'll put in some sort of masking order for within the, in the indoor places so that people will be safer in there. So I think it's the right thought process. It's partly just how to enforce it, how to enact it. You know, kind of working with the public about what they're willing, what part of the social contract makes the most sense and we get the most protection for, for kind of making these kind of onerous government rules. Sometimes it's, you sort of have to weigh out the risk versus the benefit. And so that's kind of where my thinking is about it, but I think it's an ongoing conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. And for any member of the public who's listening.
I do have a comment from Sheriff Martin. Go ahead, Brian.
I wanted to go back. My staff was listening to the public comment and got some information. We had a boat patrol deputy out on the lake this weekend. He responded to a total of nine calls for service. Eight of those calls were complaints about people being on the water that shouldn't be. And our boat patrol deputy was able to make it to all eight of those. The last one was a theft call. So we, we're responding to calls. I give the impression that we're just not doing anything and I wanted to give you some actual numbers and show what happened over the weekend. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the next question is about mortality rate. And this one comes from David Thurber, who is the branch manager at Tri-County's bank. And he says, in light of new research coming out of Santa Clara County conducted by Stanford, the estimate is that the actual infection rate is off by a factor ranging by 50 to 85 times greater than has been reported, which at the 50 times factor drops the fatality rate to 0.4% of those infected nationally and to a rate of 0.067% in California. How nationalize continuing to shutter businesses and public spaces with such a low mortality rate?
Well, you know, this is, this is new information that's just coming out the last couple of days about the antibody testing in Santa Clara and LA. And we're still trying to make sense out of that. There's a lot of controversy about the validity of those numbers. But I think, I, I, you know, I think the point is well-taken. We're going to be looking at this in different ways. We're going to be slicing the statistics in different ways. And, you know, the projections of the curve going way up didn't materialize here. And was that because the, the modeling was wrong or was that because we did something to change that? I mean, there's no way to know all that for sure. It's, I think the best thing we can say is that we're glad it didn't happen like it's happening in LA right now and, or in New York. And what's the, what's the relationship between the lower density in Lake County versus, you know, these sorts of fatality rates? It's, it's, I, I think those are all useful questions. I think it's going to be something a year from now, we'll be able to look back and make, make better sense out of the statistics. What we're doing right now is in, in real time, we're trying to make the best decisions we can, trying to balance out the impact of these sorts of interventions with the protections that they offer. And, you know, watching what's happened in other parts of the world and other parts of the country got, got everybody's attention in the public health world in California. And we're not seeing some of that, and we're, we're relieved. And, but, and I think, you know, we're also recognizing that maybe now that we know, now that we think these interventions work, to loosen them up is a good idea, because we know if we need to, we can try to clamp down again. So I'm not sure that the, that the fatality rate from the, from the virus necessarily impacts that. But, you know, so, but I think the strategy remains the same at this point.
Okay.
There are three more that relate to business reopening. And, well, excuse me, there are five more that relate to business reopening. And the first one comes from Ryan and Pilar White of White and Sons Boat Works. Please consider announcing a firm date opening the lake and allowing nonessential businesses to open. We are owners of a small business that depends on lake recreation, and we are suffering greatly and possibly unnecessarily. We see a greater likelihood of contact contracting COVID-19 walking into our local Safeway than we do allowing residents to enjoy a day out on the lake with their family. The outbreak has not occurred as anticipated in Lake County, so we believe the nonessential businesses should be allowed to open until there is a real threat. And I can keep going on the business related ones if you like, Mr. Chair. Should I keep going and then?
Yeah, I think if we could go through the business related ones and then we can go to comment after that.
Okay. So the next two are about, they are about the need for dog groomers to reopen. The statewide list of essential workers includes those at animal care facilities that provide food, shelter, and veterinary care and/or routine care of other necessities of life for animals. My grooming business falls under the category of routine care. It has now been interpreted that the statewide essential business list includes dog groomers. Here is an explanation of what the state decided. After much discussion, we reviewed specific language from the state. That language and discussion with local providers led us to the conclusion that not only do these businesses provide routine care, but also services which directly affect the health and welfare of pets. Further, these businesses have shown care in accepting animals outside of the facility, not allowing animals inside, not, excuse me, not allowing humans inside and practicing other proper hygiene. Unlike hair salons for humans who are in direct physical contact and proximity with their clients, pet groomers can effectively maintain proper separation. Medical reports indicate that while some domesticated animals can possess COVID-19, they are not shown to be humans and have been deemed safe. Pets mean the world to their owners. I hope you can reconsider the status of my business and how essential it is for the community. And this comes from Lori Wilson of Bark Avenue Pet Salon. And on the same subject, Deborah Stover writes, after our groomer's business was shut down as nonessential, I was concerned for the safety and well-being of my elderly and medically compromised dog. His medical condition is exasperated and endangers his life when he is not regularly groomed. After some research, I was able to find that the state of California has deemed animal care and grooming as an essential service. Can you please reconsider your decision and reopen the dog groomers? And so then the last category are local gyms. Oh, and excuse me, I think I neglected to read the name of that last one. So that last one came from Deborah Stover. And then on the subject of gyms, this one comes from Laura Kaiser of Muscle Matrix Gym. I own a small business in South Lake County, Muscle Matrix Gym. We applied for the SBA disaster assistance and the funds ran out. What type of business assistance will be available on a county level, if any? Also, will there be specific instructions on how our business can reopen soon? Fitness is very important for mental health, and we have every intention of restructuring it if needed so we can operate on some level. Allowing no equipment boot camp classes with 10 or less by reservation outdoors at 6:00 AM or letting us change our hours or monitor 10 people or less in the gym where equipment is six feet apart. We would hope to submit our structure for approval to start back ASAP. Will some businesses be allowed to do this? Thank you for your consideration and thank you for making Lake County great. And then the last one, also on gyms, comes from Christina Thomas. Can you please address the issue of public gyms? Our community already has some of the worst health related to diet and exercise in the state. I am sure mental health is not much farther behind. While with all the gyms closed, the complete wellness of all is being negatively impacted. Not all our kids in communities have yards to complete their physical exercise requirements for school. Some of us need the gyms to be open for our physical and mental well-being. I know there would have to be changes to make it comply with the shelter in place safely, but the community within these businesses are willing to conform. Thank you for considering this topic, Kristi Thomas. And so that completes all of the public input about business reopening today, at least. Pet groomers, gyms, and then the business that includes working of the boat works business. So those are the business ones.
Right. Well, those are, those are helpful to hear all those. I mean, I would encourage each of them to sketch out a proposal about how you would see this going. What I would see right now is the boat works business is, we are working on plans to slowly open the lake. It's going to be step by step. And I'm not sure exactly what, you know, so kayaks, single, non-motorized boats kind of things would be the first step. And moving along and including the kind of the bait shops and tackle shops and stuff at appropriate phases near. But so I think if you have some suggestions on a stepwise way to roll that out, that would be helpful to send them in to us. The second thing is the pet groomers. I think that's, yeah, that I'm not, that seems reasonable to do that. And I think we're already allowing that now. You might want to call into the, to the public health line, the, the line on the, that we use to answer all these kind of questions. But if not, I'll be sure to put that in the next order. So that seems reasonable. And then the third one is the gyms. You know, I've been sort of thinking that gyms probably wouldn't be able to be doing it just because there's, seems like people are so close and using the same equipment over and over. And so, and just the, the risk of transmitting the virus seems pretty significant in there. But I'm, I'm totally open that it seems reasonable to have outdoor boot camps. That seems totally reasonable. And so if you could kind of sketch out how you, how you would see a stepwise loosening of distancing and stuff, then we're, you know, it probably wouldn't be in this first round, but maybe the second round, I would encourage you to send that in.
Supervisor Brown?
Dr. Pace, I didn't think you had discretion to go any less restrictive than the state. And I think the state is the one that required the gyms to be closed.
Right. I think that's right. But I think what's going to happen is, my suspicion is, he's gonna, like, sort of, in response to Supervisor Sabatier's letter, it seemed like when he was talking last week, he was very specific about, what did he, how did he put it? He kept saying localism is determinism or something like, is determinative. That basically, it seemed like he's gonna leave a lot of this to our discretion once he loosens up. So the current order is the foundation, but I think once he loosens some of this up, we'll have a little more discretion. And so I think if we have some of these proposals in place and we're thinking about them, then when he, when we see what he's going to do, then we can go, go think about loosening them up. But you're right, at this point, I can't change that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I agree that he did say localism, but I, I think that we need to push for that to happen rather than it just being a statement that was on the news. I do want to say that the idea with the gym is, is similar to the idea with the real estate folks. Have the gym submit a plan on how they're going to do, do this safely, because they're going to know better than anyone else, because not every gym is the same either. So just tell us what your plan is. Are you going to say every other bicycle is going to be accessible for people to do their spin cycle? You know, things like that. And I think that, I, I think every business wants to be safe, and I think they're going to do it right. And I think that if we ask for something that's like the, the real estate one from the Realtors, it was a single page. So it's not like a, it requires a whole 10-page strategic plan on how you're going to open back up for COVID-19 precautions. I think that we can keep it simple so that every business has the opportunity to just quickly draft down how they're going to be doing those things. And I think that even though it's not open right now for the gym, for them to submit it now so that they can be prepared to open is the better way to go. That way we can, we don't say, okay, now we're open, go ahead and send us your plans. No, let's go ahead and, and see if we can do some pre approvals so that when the opening happens. I do want to go back to our real estate. And, and there, there's a point in, in, in some of the things that we do where every intention is good. We want to keep people out that don't need to be here, such as those that don't live in this county. But the fact is, we're not doing that. You and I, every one of us have received complaints about vacation homes being filled. We've put out the memo saying, please, now is not the right time to visit. People are still coming. We're doing what we can because there's a point where I don't feel right about us ticketing or arresting people for accessing their property. Do I not want them to be here because I would prefer that they stay home and not move around and maybe spread the virus they don't know they have? Absolutely. Do I think we should be ticketing them for them, possibly arresting them for it? Absolutely not. And obviously, we're not doing those things either, because others don't believe that that's what we should be doing. And so I think that when, going back to the real estate, I think we should do, just like we did with the visiting to your secondary home, it should just be a high recommendation that you not bring in people from outside of the county and that we just leave it at that, because the people from outside of the other, the county, they're already coming in. But yet we're going to tell a business that people that are already coming in, that they're not supposed to do business with them. And so it's, it's like we're trying to control something that we're not controlling. And so I think that we just put out the recommendation. We would prefer that people from out of the county do not come here to do business. And then if they do, they do. Because again, at what level of control do we have? They're just going to do it anyways. And are we going to know? No. But what we can do is we can make the suggestion of, just like the mask, just like everything else, this is what we would prefer you to do. And if they don't do it, then it's not like they're breaking the law. It's just not going after our recommendations. Because I think that the longer we try and control, the more we're going to lose control. And I think that we need to start looking at the reality of things is we already have these people from out of county that are coming here, whether or not we're recommending it. And there's nothing that we're doing about it, because we probably don't want to do something about it, because it feels wrong to go after these people for accessing their properties. And so I would like to make a suggestion that we look at just turning that into a recommendation. The exemption and having to go through is more work for Dr. Pace and his team to have to filter through all those things to process. Just get rid of the exemptions and just tell them this is the recommendation that we offer for you. And then boom, that's one thing less that we are more strict now than the, than the state. The lake, I would like for us to look at potentially trying to open as Dr. Pace was suggesting with non-engine boats like kayaks or whatever else, and just see how that works for a weekend. See if we can open that on the Friday and see if that can happen. Then maybe we can open up to the lake, opening our docks. That way only people with private docks can have access to the lake. And then we expand that again and again. But I would love to see something be lessened. And then again, measure to see if we are seeing any of those changes having a negative impact that we may or may not see. But I would love for those things to happen within the week, if that's possible. And for the real estate, I'm just offering that that's just what we do, because let's not kid ourselves, our level of control is really not all there.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue on. Thank you, Bruno. We're going to go ahead and continue on. Carol, with any public comment?
So nothing further from the email, and so we'll ask Jake to unmute everyone.
Okay, Jake, can you unmute the room?
Okay, I will start unmute the room here. Okay, the room is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, you can now speak.
Do we have any public comment from, from the room? Anyone who's on the, on the Zoom? It is unmuted, right, Jake?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Well, hearing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. What happened? A picture.
I hear you, but I don't see you.
Yeah, I'm working on it. There we go. Hit the row button. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up, bring back to the board. Supervisor Brown?
So, you know, I, I see some movement. I just, I wish it could move quicker. I know still, nobody's explained to me why it can't. I think it could, and I appreciate Bruno's comments. You know, I said from the beginning, this is, what I feel is just an opinion. I realize that, but, you know, it's based on experience. So this is not enforceable, not enforceable. It's just, you're writing a ticket is not the enforcement. It's also the prosecution, it's going to court and all this stuff. None of that's going to happen. We saw that with all the evacuations. You know, there were press releases about all these people that were behind the lines, you know, and looters and all this stuff. None of them were prosecuted. The DA's office has to be involved in it. We haven't heard anything from her. It's not going to go to court. It's just so, instead of making good people criminals like the gym. If somebody said, you know what, I'm opening the gym, I don't care, going to do it. I'm going to use our own practices. There's nothing that can be done. Do it and write tickets all day long. It's just a ticket. If I were, if I were a gym owner, I'd throw it right in the garbage. I'd recycle. You know, because it's, it's people's livelihoods that we're talking about here. And people are starting to realize that. And so I think the quicker we become cooperative with them, instead of expecting them or demanding them to be cooperative with us, the better off we're all going to be. So that's my opinion again.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Yeah, and this is unprecedented times. I think, you know, we're moving through this. I'm glad about the conversation we have today. We are understanding a little bit more each week as we move through it. So I'm glad that we're having the conversation about recreation and opening up some other things as we move through it. But, you know, I will always say, no one knows the answer or can see the future. Just will reiterate, as we're doing this, there may be a time where something does escalate here in Lake County, and we will have to lock down again. So we need to always have that in our mind as we move through. I appreciate every business. I do think now, right now, coming up with best practices is the easiest way. So when we are able to open up, like you said, Bruno, we're ready to go. Every industry needs to be doing that and understand their responsibility behind it. Because ultimately, as we open it up, you know, each business owner will be taking on that responsibility and that liability as folks are coming into their facilities again. So I had the conversation today.
Okay, I got a text from Melissa Fulton. Apparently she was trying to weigh in on something and Jake couldn't hear her. So I don't know, I just got a text from her about that. So I'm not sure, Jake, if you, you know, what the, what the deal is with that. But Melissa, as part of the, the blue collar.
Yeah, I think she has to join the Zoom meeting, though.
I don't see Melissa Fulton in this.
She's not in, she's not in the room.
Okay.
Unless her phone number is, this is her, joined via phone.
I don't know, I don't know Melissa's phone number at this point, right off the bat, so.
So when she, when she joined you last time, she was in, you know, with the video, so.
Yeah, we saw her, we saw her last time. And we're just encouraging folks, you know, as they can do that. It becomes real challenging, you know, to get in unless they're in the Zoom or they're sending the emails, so.
Yeah, that's not her phone number that I have.
Yeah.
What's the number?
Line was open as well when we did it.
Okay. Maybe I'll try to send her the Zoom while we're talking here. Zoom link.
Might there be comments she wants to make or as she moves through, we'll make sure it's part of the, you know, the public record? We can see if she can jump on there. I know she did it last one.
Well, I think it's, I think it's important. I'm not sure exactly what it is that she, she wants to. she wants to talk about, but she, they did a, they did a pretty significant and substantial survey, um, that, uh, she may wanna, wanna talk about, but go ahead.
Yeah, I think, uh, we all saw it, uh, I know something went out from the Chamber of Commerce to the mama group, other groups to work on it. And just following up on what we're talking about today, best practices for all of our businesses in this new environment. I know all of our businesses are working to get that done, and that'll help, uh, our working group and obviously, uh, Dr. Pace as we move forward, uh, for the safety of our community as we reopen. So Supervisor Jabati?
Uh, just two thoughts, uh, one on those, uh, best practices, um, not sure what's possible. I don't know if that would need to go through the Chamber of Commerce or if that's possible to do, uh, with, uh, the approval through the Public Health, um, Officer. Uh, but if I was a business, I should, I think I should have two options. One is use someone else's guidelines that they've created for a similar business. And number two, maybe create my own guidelines because I feel my business is unique. And so however public we can make these guidelines, which I think would be helpful for me as a consumer as well, to know what kind of precautions are being used at a place of business. So I don't know who can make that a public thing. I don't think it's a private information thing, so, uh, but I think it needs to be public.
So Bruno, I agree. Supervisor Brown, uh, Melissa is on the line now.
Yeah, well, what I was gonna suggest to Bruno is, uh, uh, the, the blue collar committee has done a lot of this for their businesses and for others. And so that might be a good format for them. If they wanna send me the email directly, send it to Eddie directly, or send it to Melissa directly, or all three of us, then we can, we can begin to work on that. Um, uh, you throw them in there, it's, it's really not that complicated.
No, not at all.
Got it. So I think that's a good idea to put them in touch with somebody who's actually done that format. And, and we, we can actually help them walk through that because they are gonna be very similar.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go to, uh, Melissa. Melissa, you gotta unmute yourself there, there you go. I still see it, it's still muted. There you go.
Hi. All right, uh, thank you very much.
Melissa is on the line now.
Yeah, well, what I was gonna suggest to Bruno is, uh, the, the blue collar.
Oh man, I have to hear Rob again.
Melissa, unmute again. Uh, it sounds like you're listening to.
It's only an opinion.
Granicus meeting. Um, you're gonna need to mute that.
Then we can, we can begin to work on that. Um, uh, you throw them in there, it's, it's really not that complicated.
No, no, no.
So I think that's a good idea to put them in touch with somebody who's actually done that format and.
Like being on the radio, you gotta turn the radio down.
Melissa, we're hearing the meeting in the background. I don't know if you know how to turn that off.
Go ahead and go to, uh, Melissa.
Uh, yes, can, can you hear me now?
You need to turn off your, uh, whatever you're listening to.
Hi, I'm. All right, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, we, we still hear the meeting in the background. What, if you're listening to Supervisor.
I don't have.
Melissa, unmute again. Uh, it sounds like you're listening to. Granicus meeting. Um, you're gonna need to mute that.
All right.
We can begin to work on that, um.
I'm really freaked out right now. I hear three Rob Browns.
I think it's a good idea to put them in touch with somebody who's actually done that format and.
I thought you had a comment, Melissa. Melissa, we're here.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. I don't know how I got into the wrong meeting, uh, wrong venue. Anyway, um, let me move this over so I can read to you what I wrote and sent. Uh, in reference to, um, our, um, our survey that, uh, we sent out beginning last week. And it, this is in reference to Dr. Pace's presentation and all of the discussion that's been going on. And I said in the email, in response to the business survey we distributed last week, we have collected the input from a variety of business types as to their ideas on how they see opening their business and being able to operate in a safe manner to protect themselves, their employees, and their customers. We will make this information available to Dr. Pace and the Board of Supervisors for consideration of opening more businesses to our local residents. The information may be beneficial in providing Dr. Pace with a better comfort level on opening businesses. So I will send all of those, um, comments from a variety of businesses, not just one type. And hopefully, uh, as you move forward in, uh, attempting to open businesses and get people in Lake County back to work, um, hopefully that will be beneficial. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your patience with my turning off one.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate those comments and look forward to getting that information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, we, we've opened it up to the room, uh, we had the public comment, we're, you know, uh, we're gonna try and wrap this up. Dr. Pace, do you have any final, um, comments or?
Well, I just, uh, I really appreciate this, this chance to talk about this and to get the input. Melissa, that's excellent. That's exactly what I would love to have that kind of information. So as we move forward, we can try to plan. I think the goal here is, is to, to be, uh, as safe as possible, but allowing some level of business to be going on. And, uh, I really, and, and my opinion is really, uh, profound to have the leadership working together in a positive way like this. Because I think really what we're looking at is months of navigating a very kind of difficult terrain here where the possibilities of severe outbreaks are significant. And, you know, we, the, the main tool we have right now is shutting down society. And so as we loosen up, the, the risk of infection goes up. And we're just gonna have to be monitoring that and keeping, keeping tabs on it all and probably sort of weaving back and forth between that. And it really helps to be able to have a conversation with the people that are, that are in charge and the folks that are running the businesses. So, uh, I feel like we're very lucky to be able to do all that, so thank you.
All right, Dr. Pace, thank you very much for your report. This will continue on throughout this, uh, time. So greatly appreciate the information and all the new information that you bring every week, so. With that, we'll go ahead, uh, go ahead Supervisor Jabati.
I, I was just curious if, um, cause I mentioned, uh, what I would like to see, and obviously it's just me, uh, for, uh, the changes to real estate, wondering if I can, um, ask Dr. Pace for his feedback on what his thoughts are on that.
I mean, it makes sense to me. I think, uh, you know, there's a, I'm not the smartest person about real estate. It's, I'm a doctor and, uh, think about health part. And so I will talk to people about it, but I, I think it's a great suggestion. It sure would make my life easier if we could do that.
All right. We'll look forward to the update on the real estate then. All right, any more questions from the board at this point? If not, we'll go ahead and let, go ahead, Bruno.
And, and actually, just, uh, I forgot the second part of the question because I think it's important to, um, many in our communities, uh, is, uh, do you spoke of the non-engine boats? Is Dr. Pace still here? I, his, uh, video seems frozen.
Maybe he I don't know. Yeah, he looks frozen. Still there, Dr. Pace?
I have a, a connection issue right now.
So I just, uh, received a text from him, his power died.
Oh, okay, well, that's gonna be a problem.
So I think you can reach directly out to him, uh, Bruno on, on the boats, uh, or something like that.
I will, because, um, basically what I was going to say and what I will be contacting him with is I think that we are mostly in consensus, not necessarily have a full consensus to review the lake closure. Um, and if that's something he feels he wants to do, I think that providing the public with some sort of timeline of how we plan to move about that is gonna be helpful to, uh, at least reduce, um, the frustrations of, uh, those closures.
Okay, looks like he's back.
Power's back.
I don't know if he knows that he's back. Okay, Bruno, thank you very much for that, you know, obviously.
I'll reach out to Dr. Pace.
Very important on that issue. We know the lake is uh, very important to everybody. So I'm glad that we are working on having some initial, uh, steps forward. Hopefully they will happen as soon as possible. Okay, go ahead and move it along then. I don't think Dr. Pace knows he's on there anymore, someone can let him know that he is. But, uh, we're gonna go ahead and move forward, uh, to our next item. Is there a need from the board or anybody? Would anybody like to take a five-minute break?
I'd like to make a request.
Yes.
Because we have not, um, voted on adding an extra item for the letter that I drafted, and I'd like to, uh, um, I'll, I'll make a motion right now that we have added, uh, extra item 4.3 to review a letter to Governor Newsom, uh, about giving, uh, local jurisdictions the ability to control the reopening of their businesses and their economy. Um, and I would like to make that an extra item because this has come up after the fact of the posting of the agenda. And I think it's important that we submit that to Governor Newsom as soon as possible before a decision is made.
Second. Okay, there's motion and a second. Obviously I can ask for public input, but I'm not sure if there will be, uh, any public input. But, uh, we gotta move, we gotta decide whether or not it's gonna be taken up, so. Uh, I'm not sure who came out first. I'll go with, um, uh, Tina Scott, and then I'll go to you Supervisor Crandall. Supervisor Scott?
I don't know if there's an appropriate time to, to discuss this, but I, um, agree that I would like to see local control, but I don't think this letter needs to be rushed right now. And I think we, we deserve the right for the public to be able to weigh in on this letter. And if we push this letter through today, they won't have that opportunity to do so. And I, I think maybe showing the letter today what it might look like, but not, um, sending it till next week would be best.
We have a motion and a second to take it up.
Our discussion, even though we can't post it in Granicus, I can share my screen and show it to you. But that would be after you act on the motion in front of you.
Okay, so we have a motion. So Carolyn, go ahead.
Okay, Supervisor Scott T A.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall.
Hi.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
No.
And if we can take that up after the 1 o'clock to make sure that the letter is appropriately drafted?
Uh, we're, we're not able to, um, we're, we're not able to show the letter in any way in Granicus since the meeting has already started. Um, so the only thing we can do is post it while you're, I can show a share screen while you're considering it. Um, but, but we, we can't do much more than that since the meeting is underway.
You can also view more.
It's more for me to just quickly review because I, again, I typed this up, uh, as we were talking. And, and just to get the good, positive feedback, I wanna make sure that I at least get a chance to quickly review it.
Sure.
This is, you can talk about the subject, right? It's not to send the letter, that's what, that's what I was voting on.
Yeah, this is just to bring it up as an extra.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it sounds like there is movement to bring it up as an extra.
Yes, yes.
On doing that after you return at 1:00 PM. As you know, you have a timed item at 1:00 PM.
Yes.
Uh, and you may have other agenda items you wanna take up before that timed item. Um, and Director Scott Daley has also asked if he could, uh, if public input could be taken up or perhaps revisited at 1:00 PM for the introduction of his new staff member at 1:00 PM, uh, who could not be on this call all morning. Um, so, so they would like to do that at 1:00 PM. And, um, so you may wanna kind of adjust your approach here, Mr. Chair, so that you can have the items that are essential before 1:00 PM, uh, take a break, uh, before 1:00 PM, and then reconvene at 1:00.
Yeah, let's go ahead and work through, uh, till 12:30 here, and, um, we can kinda move through, uh. I, I definitely agree with that. Uh, let's see what items may be able to be taken up a little bit quicker here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Bruno.
I just wanted to let you know that, um, item 5.1 is available for us to vote on. I was not aware that the new agreement had been uploaded to Granicus last night. Um, cause that was an issue that I brought up is that we were looking at a old, eh, agreement uh, versus a new agreement for the Ag Department. But the new agreement is in Granicus, so all of that is available for us to, uh, vote on.
I know at the beginning of the meeting, we asked to move that to, uh, 4/28. I guess we go back and reopen that item. Is there an essential timing item with that, uh, that needs to be approved this week? It can't be done on the 28th?
Uh, that part I wouldn't be able to answer for you. I, I don't know, that would have to go through Steve. I know that it's, it's for the hemp, um, services for the registration with the state. And this is to get paid back for their services from, I believe it's, uh, from last year. I wanna say June 30th, uh, 20, um, or July, 2019 to June 30th this year.
Sometimes on these things, they need time to submit it to, uh, the, whoever they need to submit it to. We could check with Steve Hadjik on that and have that answer for you later in the day.
Okay, thank you, Carol.
And Mr. Chair, your board may wanna review it also, so you'll spend some time there.
Okay, thank you very much, Anita. Thank you, Carol. Now we'll look to maybe take that up later on, Bruno. We'll look to get those answers. Um, moving right along, uh, just had a question on the Brad, the broadband discussion. Uh, the plan, I would like to do is sort of knock some of these out, uh, a little bit quicker here and then work to 12:30 and take a lunch break. So, um, I know that, uh, do you have any idea on timing for your item?
My presentation, I will try to keep between no longer than five to 10 minutes maximum.
Okay, um, how about this? Let's go to item, uh, 7.3. And we'll come, we'll, we'll come back to 7.2 if we can, if we can work these. 7.3, uh, a consideration of a letter, Lake County's congressional delegation regarding emergency coronavirus relief, funding, and, uh, authorize the chair to sign. Um, so let's go to item 7.3.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I've got that one. Um, this is an opportunity for your board to sign onto a letter recommended by CSAC um, to submit your support of advocacy record, uh, efforts um, with our congressional delegation to the latest set of emergency coronavirus relief measures. We learned of this opportunity last week, and with the, um, information we had, it appeared that it was pretty urgent. And so with that in mind, I went ahead and submitted a letter like this under my cover um, with hope of making sure they heard from Lake County. But there is still an opportunity for your board to follow up with a, a letter for this purpose. As you remember, or as you are aware, the CARES Act, um, was approved, uh, with funding for jurisdictions that have populations of over 500,000 people. And what this new, uh, legislation that is being worked on would, um, would be expanded to include smaller jurisdictions like our county. And so, um, sending a letter of support, uh, seems like a, a very good thing to do on behalf of our county. And, um, so that is the letter for your consideration now.
All right, Carol, thank you very much for bringing us aboard, and, um, our CSAC representative also, um, getting this to us. So, um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm in complete support of the letter. Uh, having, you know, the money only go to the 500,000 population or above. Uh, we are a rural county that, uh, definitely will need some help as we move through this process. So I'm in favor, um, of getting this thing out as soon as possible to our delegates. Any other comments from the board?
I, I agree with the letter, I appreciate.
Go ahead.
Sorry, uh, I appreciate the fact that this was already, um, moved forward by our CAO. And I think it's, um, just right for us to follow up with, uh, our names behind the letter, saying this is, uh, this is, uh, what we wanna support.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, not seeing none. We'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Uh, Carol, do you have any public comment on this? And then Jake, you can open up the room after that.
No public comment by email on this one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Jake, if you could open up the room?
I will open up the room and see if there's public comment.
Okay, the floor is unmuted. If you would like to speak, you have a chance.
Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back uh to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the letter to Lake County's congressional delegation regarding emergency coronavirus relief funding and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Uh Supervisor Sabatier motion, Supervisor Scott second it. Go ahead, uh Carolyn, if you could go with the roll call vote.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you very much, board. We'll go ahead and move on to um go ahead and move on to item uh 7.5 uh consideration of proposed findings of facts and decision in the deal of Todd House House folks.
Uh yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. These are the findings of facts uh and the decision which was to deny this appeal by your board. Um it's here present for you. If your board agrees with the findings and confirms your decision to deny the appeal, you can approve both by motion to do so.
Okay. Uh any discussion from the board? All right, any public input? We're gonna open this up for public input on this item. Carol. Okay, okay, the I don't hear from Carol. Go ahead and
Sorry, Mr. Chair, no public input by email.
Okay, uh Jake, can you open the room up on this item?
Okay, I will open the floor. The floor is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, you have a moment.
Okay, hearing none, we'll go and bring this back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the findings of fact and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
And move to
Okay, there's a motion to uh there's a motion.
You can actually wish to put in one motion. Mr. Chair, it's up to your board.
All right, would you admit, go ahead and amend your motion or would you be willing to, Jake?
Yeah. Yes, I will. I move to have approved the findings of fact and authorize the chair to sign and move to deny the appeal.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Uh go ahead, Carolyn, if you call for the roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Anita.
Mr. Chair, I have an update for you on item 5.1. We have
Yes.
communication with the uh Ad Commissioner who says that that item can wait until April 28th.
Okay. You okay with that, Bruno? We just move along that path?
I'm perfectly fine with that.
All right, moving along here. I know we want to get uh as much done as possible and if we could get to uh our closed session. So um it can maybe challenging on these. I I don't know how much discussion is going to go on with both these uh 7.2 and 7.4. Um we'll pick up one item then, Bruno, let's go to uh item 7.2. Discussion and review of master broadband plan with potential uh action. And after that, I think what we will do is we will move to uh closed session. Uh and then we'll take up item 7.4 and the rest of the rest of the stuff after uh we take a quick break and then come back for one o'clock items.
Okay. So I am sharing my PowerPoint slide with you all. Let me know if you can see that.
Yes.
Okay, and then I need to go this way and now I can do that. Okay. So uh you all received the master broadband plan. This has been kind of uh sitting around since the end of November and there was so many other projects being worked on that I did not make the decision to move this forward uh until now. And uh I know now is kind of an awkward situation to have a a large conversation on a master broadband plan. However, we're all dealing with internet access right now and I think it's um very relevant to what we're dealing with, whether you're in school, whether you're at work uh or just trying to enjoy yourself at home through entertainment or whatnot. Um and there's also a lot of potential grants that are opening up because of the situation that we're in due to COVID-19. So again, this was drafted by Upstate California Connect Consortium, the UCCC uh out of Chico State, and this is just my brief summary of their presentation. So I'm just pulling out from their information, not making up my own. Uh so real quick, this offers an assessment of our current status of our broadband infrastructure for both residential and businesses. It offers recommendations for improving speeds, access and expanded deployment of infrastructures. And then it also offers supporting grants and partnerships to assist in achieving these infrastructure goals. And in the latter part, I didn't have this on here, it also offers maybe potential policies that we might want to look at in the future to help expedite these things. Um broadband is important for all these listed items right here. Education, that one's an easy one and it matches with workforce development. Just having training online, uh having the ability to access the information you need. Healthcare, more and more relying on uh the internet. Agriculture, we're asking, for instance, our hemp folks and our our cannabis folks to give us GPS coordinates. Uh they also are utilizing the internet for uh understanding what's going on with their crops and so that there's more artificial intelligence being used. Um any anything that's work-related, economic development, manufacturing, obviously the internet benefits them. Uh tribal communities was um written down in our summary as having some of the lowest access of uh internet and broadband internet. And so I, that is involved there uh because we want to see everybody have equitable access to broadband internet. And then obviously, emergency services. Uh and this is for both wireless and wired internet. And as we all know, there's certain areas that are black holes in our county when we go through where we have no access whatsoever, whether that's cellular phone or even internet. Uh so just real quick going over this, this is from 2015, so some of these things may have changed. But the mi- the biggest one that I want you to look at is the digital divide. And the digital divide, the higher the percentage rate is the higher the difference of the ability for our populations to access adequate broadband capacity for internet access. And we are at 52. Right now, we're in a situation where we want to invite people to come to our communities, maybe work from our communities. And we have been showing our already through this meeting as we speak that we can do remote access work and remote access uh schooling. But we also show that we can do better. Uh and so I think that we need to look at increasing our digital, uh decreasing our digital divide and increasing our download speeds and our upload speeds because businesses are going to want to have certain types of access. And I think having these numbers in front of us shows that we can do better and we will do better, and this is going to help us get there. Uh here is a map. It's a little blurry. Uh this is of all the uh fixed wire line internet access that we have. Uh the purple means that you have very good access to the internet. Anything that is yellow, brown, or even green is getting into the point where it's not that great. And you can see that there's a lot of spots that are missed out. Cobb and Spring Valley definitely stand out. Uh certain portions of Lower Lake, but even then, uh and certain portions of Lucerne, but even then, within the areas where there's high population, it can get spotty from time to time. And so expanding on our uh infrastructure would benefit a lot of people. Uh this is our wireless um access. Again, you can see that uh places like Spring Valley and Nice, uh Kelseyville, they all have uh difficulties in having access. And again, Cobb stands out as another one where uh there's a lot of difficult access for wireless uh internet access. These, because of this master plan, uh it would help us be more eligible for these different levels of funding. The CASF funding comes through a specific uh assembly bill that was created in the state of California to give us access to funds to be able to expand. All the colors that you see on the left, sorry. Sorry, sorry. All the colors that you see on the left map are potential areas where these funds could be used to help expand our broadband infrastructure or enhance the broadband capability. On the right-hand side is a funding uh source for USDA uh funds for us to again do the same types of activities, expanding our infrastructure and enhancing the broadband capability. Every color you see means that those areas would be eligible. Uh as you can see, Spring Valley is on there, certain areas of Cobb and Nice and Lucerne are on there. It's it's um the different programs are going to be hel- helpful for all of us. And then there's a lot of new grants coming out that maybe our schools could take advantage of, uh our businesses could take advantage of. And it's, this is not for us to put money into. This is for us to have a plan of what it is that we want to do. And the UCCC will actually help us to access some of these funds to be able to enhance and expand our uh broadband infrastructure. So part of the policies that is being offered in this master plan is that we should come up with priority areas for broadband infrastructure deployment. And I think that fits right along into our economic development strategy. Where is our economic development strategy? Where should we make sure that they're going to have access to high-speed internet? Because nobody's going to develop without the thought that there's going to have to have access to internet access. So I think that goes uh hand in hand. Uh we've already discussed a dig once policy. I hope that comes back to us at one point. That's basically where we say we would prefer that you uh advertise that you're digging into our ground and then making a trench so that as many people can utilize that trench today rather than having to redig everything. It's going to help us uh be um uh more efficient in the manner of laying out new infrastructure. Uh use assets and master lease agreements, uh the county and cities provided assets, meaning buildings or poles or water towers that we have to the UCCC so that maybe we can utilize those um buildings and those structures to provide antennas or other uh possibility of expanding our infrastructure and then leasing that out to companies so that we can actually benefit from that ourselves as well. Uh streamline the application process and permit fees that has to do with community development, seeing if there's any way of making it easier to expand the infrastructure and making it more efficient. And then updating our general plan with a telecommunications element, which you saw in the master broadband plan. There is an actual sample of an a general plan element that we can add inside of our general plan uh whenever we get around to updating it. And again, that general plan update would make it easier for us to be able to obtain the grants and of of course uh more efficient in uh getting companies to want to work with us in uh expanding. So that is a very quick, brief summary of this entire master broadband plan. I do want to thank the folks at UCCC for putting this together. They did it at no cost. Their goal is for the Upstate California Consortium to help all of our communities to have a better broadband infrastructure for the future. Uh and I think again, this is really relevant to what we're dealing with today as students are doing their schoolwork from home, as we're doing our meetings from home as well. Um and so I think that this is something that if approved today can help us go ahead and start accessing grants that are available. Again, I'm not, this is not a plan so that us as Lake County start building the infrastructure. It's a plan so we can make sure that that infrastructure is easier to build out by those companies and agencies that do offer broadband. And Moe, you're you're muted right now.
Okay, any questions from the board? Supervisor Brown? I don't have any uh questions, but I do have a comment. I I appreciate you. You know, life is still going on, hopefully. And so this is a long-range plan and um you know, I think you you'll be having the conversation for a long time, so there's no no sense in waiting and delaying that. So I appreciate you. You put a lot of work into that and it makes good sense um to get to get going on this. So I appreciate that, Bruno. All right, any other questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Sabatier.
And and we do have Michelle Scully, I believe, who is still um on the line right now. She was absolutely pivotal in getting UCCC to come out to this community uh and discuss this with the uh Economic Development Corporation Group as well as a subgroup called BARC, uh which is the business uh not acquisition, but business.
Attraction.
I'll let her tell you what the acronym stands for, but I believe Michelle Scully is on the line to provide any further input.
Thanks Supervisor Sabatier. I don't really have anything to add other than the fact that the B stands for attraction.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate your um energy and commitment to this and all of your boards for bringing this forward. Uh like Supervisor Sabatier said, the consortium did all of this at no cost to us and this will tee us up to be competitive in upcoming uh grant processes. And we're all experiencing how lost we'd be now without um sufficient internet. And there's so many students in our community that that's just a norm for them. So I I thank all of you for bringing this forward.
Absolutely. Michelle, thank you very much. Any more questions or comments from the board? All right. Oh Supervisor Sabatier.
I know that I did receive a uh email from uh Melissa Fulton. I'm not sure if uh she is on the line, but if she's not, I will text her. I I just don't know.
Well, we'll go ahead and open this up uh to public comment. We'll start with um Carol.
Oh, she is.
Nothing by email, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then we'll go ahead. Uh Jake, if you could open up the room uh for anyone who has a comment. And I do see Melissa's on here.
Yeah. Okay, I will unmute the floor here. Okay, the floor is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment.
Uh Bruno, it's been so long since we've had the opportunity to talk about broadband that I'm not sure which response or communication I had with you. But obviously, whatever we can do to continue the great work that Michelle Scully initiated, uh it benefits all of us. And hopefully, we can soon move on and get the service and the broad scope of coverage that we need in this wonderful county. So I echo Rob's comments and um Michelle's that this is something that we need and desperately need. So whatever can be done, um we definitely need to move forward as soon as we can. And thank you again for bringing it up.
Thank you, Melissa. Is there anybody else in the room that may have comment on this issue, on this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the master broadband plan.
I second it.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Carolyn, can you uh call for the vote?
Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown.
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Was that five to 10 minutes?
Yeah, perfect. I know, like I said, trying to do timing here, we're looking at uh we'd like to, I think, uh get to closed session. We haven't done that before. We've gone to closed session and opened back up. Uh talking on the timing on that uh you, let's go ahead and do that. We can take up item seven point, we have item 6.3, item 7.4. Uh we also added a letter to the governor, which we take on after our timed items at 1:00 PM. And then we also have the introduction. Uh Carol, we're gonna do the introduction right before uh we do item 6.3?
Yes, that would be your opportunity to take up input.
All right, perfect. So uh for now, wh- what I would like to do, and you can explain to me the process here, because what I'd like to do is go uh into closed session. Uh we would take a 12 through, you know, try and take a 12 through lunch break, come back at 1:00 to continue the rest of the meeting uh with item 7.4, 6.3 letter, and also the letter of the governor we added. Uh but we're going into closed session at this point, 8.1 uh conference with labor negotiators, chief negotiator M. Long, county negotiators. chief negotiator M. Long, county negotiators, Carol Etcherton, Pam Simic, and employee organizations, LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSDA, and LS, LCSMA. And Carol, if you could just go through the process for the public to join us again this afternoon, because I think we'll be leaving this meeting, correct, and going into closed session on another invitation, yes?
And I want to confirm with Jake as I'm saying this, but I believe we will all rejoin through the same link at 1:00 PM. Is that correct, Jake?
Yeah, so this, what I'll do is I'm going to leave this meeting up and running so that when you guys leave, you'll just be able to rejoin and I'll get all the notices that you're trying to rejoin and then I'll let you guys back in at 1:00.
So will we get another invitation for closed session then?
Yes, I'm going to send you another invitation for closed session as soon as we get out of this meeting. I wasn't able to do that until we get out of this meeting.
Okay.
Give me five minutes or so.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll look for that and then we're going to, all board members will be leaving at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys are good to go now.
Okay, thank you very much, Jake. Thank you, Sam. All right, we're going to go and reconvene the meeting. Exact time here at 1:13. I know we're a little behind schedule, but that's all right. We had technical difficulties, looks like we got them worked out. So we'll go ahead and reconvene the meeting. The April 21st Board of Supervisors meeting at 1:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and start with item 6.3. We come back here.
Could I ask that you take up 6.2 first so we can have the introductions Scott De Leon has been waiting to make? Would that be possible?
Oh, yes. I apologize, I missed that one.
Thank you.
Supervisor De Leon, if you'd like to introduce your employee, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. Hopefully, Tokara is.
Yeah, she's on.
There she is.
Hi, Freddie.
Awesome. Board, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to introduce Tokara Thomas. She is our new deputy director of community development. Tokara comes to us from, from North Carolina and we are absolutely thrilled to have her. She has an extensive background in economic development, affordable housing and community development. And I, the first time I interviewed her, even though it was over the computer, I came away with this, this unbelievable sense of a can-do spirit. She's, her energy is infectious and I think she's just going to be a wonderful addition to not only the community development department, but to Lake County in general. So thank you for this opportunity again to introduce Tokara and welcome her to Lake County. So thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Welcome.
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 Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it.
Eventually, we'll be in person.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, just as everybody said, we really appreciate you coming on board, obviously, and buying into Lake County and what you've seen here, but welcome. That's all we can say, welcome.
Thank you, I really truly appreciate it. It's been very warm welcome and I already feel like I'm part of the family, so.
Nice.
Good. Well, like Bruno said, we'll build on that and everybody will get to meet you in person as we move along here. Obviously, Scott De Leon, you know, takes his opinion very highly, obviously, and you know, I'm glad that he's excited about the opportunity of bringing you in. So yeah, we're looking to do some good things here in Lake County's future. So thank you for coming in and being a part of it.
Yep, and I'm ready.
Yeah, and so you know what I didn't do is introduce myself. My name is Moke Simon. I'm the District One Supervisor. I'm also the chair of the board. You know, I'm also the tribal chairman of Middletown Rancheria. I just want to welcome you here to Lake County. This is a beautiful area and you know, I just, I wanted to formally introduce myself. So welcome, Tokara, welcome to Lake County.
Thank you so much, Moke. It's a pleasure to virtually meet you.
And District One is the southernest, you know, District One is all the way down to the Napa County border. It's on the south end. It includes Middletown, Anderson Springs, Hidden Valley, Lower Lake, and a little bit of the south side of Clear Lake on the lake side. So that's my district.
And I'm Bruno Sabatier, I'm the vice chair currently for the Board of Supervisors. I represent District Two, which is the majority of the city of Clear Lake. And you can ask Scott De Leon for some details, but I will apologize in advance.
Okay. It's a pleasure to meet you, Bruno. And I accept your apology in advance.
She's already been warned.
Nice. It's a part of orientation.
Yeah. Go ahead, Eddie.
I'm Eddie, a lot of people call me EJ Crandall. I'm the district reception supervisor. My district goes from Clear Lake Oaks, Spring Valley, all the way to Blue Lake, so Holden Rock Shore, Highway 20 is in my district. And I'm also the tribal chair of Robinson Rancheria.
All right, welcome. Glad to meet you.
All right. I don't know Supervisor Scott, if you'd like to.
Supervisor Scott, District Four, which is the Lakeport area and the surrounding areas, and just welcome. And if you have any questions, and I agree for Bruno apologizing in advance, he has a lot of questions, but he is quite the firecracker on this board and I appreciate everything that he does.
Thank you Supervisor Scott.
And as you can see from the screen, I'm Rob's iPad.
Hi, Rob's iPad.
And I, I am the supervisor for the rest of the county. Whatever board you want, so, yeah, good, good to meet you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, board. Appreciate your time and we'll let you get back to work. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and once again, welcome. Okay, we'll move right along. That's great. I think that's a great addition for the department there. It's a huge revenue generator for us, so we're excited about the opportunity as we move forward. Item 6.3, our 1:00 PM item, consideration of a resolution amending Resolution 2020-34 regarding hazardous duty leave for essential employees to offset COVID-19 impacts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, back on April 3rd, you adopted Resolution Number 2020-34 and it authorized a number of things for both essential and non-essential employees. And I just want to clarify, when I use that term essential and non-essential, I'm speaking only for the purposes of this COVID-19 disaster. All of our county employees are truly essential for the important work of county, but unfortunately, that, those classifications have been thrust upon us in the midst of this disaster as we determine who will continue working and who will shelter in place. And so that resolution authorized a number of things to support both types of employees. And since then, your board has had an ad hoc committee consisting of Chairman Simon, Supervisor Sabatier, and myself to continue developing the details of one component of that, that is the component of hazardous duty leave. And what you have before you today is the ad hoc, ad hoc committee's recommendation for how the hazardous duty leave should be rolled out. And it has changed a bit from the original resolution you approved. We had the good fortune of being able to meet with all of the department heads last week during, during a department head meeting. And we talked to the department heads about the, their needs and the needs of their employees who are continuing to work through the disaster in a variety of ways. And the department heads overwhelmingly conveyed to us that to offer a hazardous duty leave benefit to essential employees that is less than the emergency paid sick leave benefit presently afforded to non-essential employees will serve as a disincentive to our dedicated workers that are continuously serving during the disaster. And they're serving both as disaster responders and they're also providing critical county services that are essential to our continuity of operations. And so with this in mind, the committee has returned to your board with the recommendation that HDL be made available to essential employees as a limited one-time benefit of 80 hours, which is equal to the 80 hours of paid, emergency paid sick leave the federal government has mandated for non-essential employees who are sheltering in place and not working. In order to receive hazardous duty leave, essential employees would need to first complete the required form, their department head would need to approve it to verify that they did serve as an essential worker. And then through our payroll system, the hazardous duty leave would be made available to approved employees for use. Hazardous duty leave requests, the time would be available soon after the employee request and, and the use of it though would still be subject to approval in the department to make sure the time off can be managed if we're still in the middle of this or even if we're not. And then much later, on July 30th, 2021, the end of next fiscal year, approved employees would be eligible to receive a cash out of up to 40 hours of any portion of the unused balance. And that would be paid out at the employee's hourly rate on the date the disaster was first declared back in, earlier in March. So to give you a sense of the cost here, we've actually made estimates in two different ways. The first of which is based on our actual budget for 2018, 2019. Forty hours of cash out if all eligible employees retain the time, it's equivalent to just a little less than 2% of their work time for an entire year. And so if you take that figure and apply it against the cost of salary and wages for permanent employees for fiscal year 2018-19, the total cost is around 916,000, of which around 363,000 would be general fund costs. The rest would be covered by the departments that have their own allocation, state and federal funding. Another way to look at it is to look at your budgeted costs for the current year, again, applying the same methodology. Total cost, a million and 80,000 approximately, of which about 414,000 would be tied to the general fund. So, so the general fund expense, which is always the most critical for us in terms of finding those dollars, is somewhere between 363,000 and 414,000. Comparatively, the cost of the lost productivity of, productivity of our employees who are receiving the emergency paid sick leave at 80 hours each while they're sheltering in place, we estimate to be perhaps even exceed that amount. We're still in the process of approving employees for that because the process is ongoing, but as of late last week, more than 200 of our employees had requested emergency paid sick leave. So the resolution before you today would authorize this leave to eligible employees who make the request and the department head again approves their eligibility. Employees would not be eligible for this leave if they have used any increment of the federally mandated leaves, including the emergency paid sick leave or the PHEL, which is an expansion on the Family Medical Leave Act for people who are caring for children who are not in school at this time due to the COVID crisis. The amount of hazardous duty leave an employee receives would be prorated if they are a part-time permanent employee. And again, as I explained before, if they have retained this leave more than a year from now, it would be, any unused balance would be cashed out for the employee.
Okay, thank you very much, Carol. I'd like to bring this back to the board, Supervisor Sabatier.
I just want to clarify, Ms. Hutchinson, you said the 18-19 budget, did you mean the 19-20 budget? The calculations for the money is based on this current fiscal budget that we're on, not the previous one?
Yeah, well, we looked at it two ways. We looked at current year and past year. And so the range is, you know, because past year, the books are, are closed, on how much payroll costs were. And so that's why it is a lesser amount if you look at actuals versus budgeted cost, budgeted costs for the current year, our budget is based on the assumption that all of our positions are filled. And, and we all know that doesn't happen unfortunately.
Yeah, that's where that 20% comes in.
Okay. Any more questions or comments from the board at this point?
I'll just say that from the beginning, our goal has been to support our staff that are still being asked and requested to go to work and continue the function of what our government is made to serve the public with. And it's, I, I feel this is a necessary thing to provide for our staff as we are asking people to shelter in their homes and simultaneously asking our staff to come to work and work because they are essential and that this is a, this is a good way to support those staff.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the other ad hoc committees as we work through this. I completely concur with Supervisor Sabatier. You know, it's a way to, once again, reward the folks that are coming in as the essential workers working through this process so our government keeps working. Obviously, I know a lot of them are working in areas that have some extreme hazards and other things, but ultimately, I think Carol said it again, every worker is essential, but we're trying to work through this COVID-19 crisis here that we're dealing with, this pandemic, in, in the most fair way that we can. And I think today's proposal would allow us to do that in supporting our employees that we are asking to come to work for us. So yeah, I'm in agreement. Go ahead Supervisor Brown.
So, and I appreciate the ad hoc committee's work on this. I, I'll tell you, this is, this is right up there with one of the toughest decisions that, that we will have to make. Either way, we vote on it, but you know, it's, I don't know the easy answer, I really don't. You know, we are expecting people to come in. I know some of them will, you know, benefit from this and they're not having exposure or contact with the public regularly. Some are, some are already getting safety pay, some aren't, you know, so it's, it's a real balancing act. My, my concern for this is not because I don't think it's a good idea or that I, that I think the committee and the department heads haven't done a good idea, a job of evaluating this. Mine comes from, I just, I'm not sold on the idea that we can afford it. And you know, it's, we, we don't know what this is going to happen. And again, you know, I, I know this is my opinion as well, so I'm just going to lay it out there that this is very likely to be the, once this is all said and done, this is going to be the first time in the history of the county that the Board of Supervisors will have to look at laying off people instead of just cutting positions. And I, I think, you know, while, we'll see who's really essential at that point because we're going to be laying off people who are, are defined as essential by the governor's orders. And that's unfortunate, but it's going to be because we're, this is really going to hit us really hard because of the ripple effect that it's had through our community and their, and their businesses and the employees, the ones that actually largely pay for, for the money that, that goes into this. We have, you know, a survey that was done recently and it, it showed that 28 businesses were just absolutely closed, many of those may not open back up. 68% of the businesses have reduced hours, so they've shut their, you know, they've shut their businesses down quite a bit. Twenty, these 28% don't believe they can make their capital needs for the 60 days and we've already well into the 30 days. Forty, 43% of them don't know if they'll make it past 90 days. And we could very well go to that. So you know, we're balancing, you know, what we're doing for our, our employees that we value. I would like to be able to do, you know, work this out to where we could keep them. I, I don't know, I mean, this is, you know, almost a million dollars and in all fairness, it's rare that we estimate and we're under the estimation. Sometimes, sometimes it goes over, you know, by the time we're done with it. And that's what, you know, I'm afraid could happen. And regardless of whether it's general fund or money out of those separate departments, it's still taxpayer funds that are used for a purpose. And I, I just don't, I don't see the money coming in at the end of this that will, will make us whole again. So that's the concern that I have. And again, I, I'm not here to debate this with anybody. I think everybody is going to vote how they vote on it based on what they think is the best, and I just have a real hard time with committing to this kind of money, not because it's not a good cause or a good, good purpose, I just don't think that ultimately we'll have it. So that's, that's the concern I have. Thank you. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
As far as I'm concerned, from all the conversations that we've had and all the research that I've been able to do on our budget and our savings and our side rainy day fund, this isn't even tapping in the rainy day fund, this is, we, every year, we end up with salary savings because of our vacancy rate, and to me, I mean, if you just look at the sale of the castle over in Lucerne, that was 3.5 million, and that has not been spent yet, we've allocated a portion of that, and here, this can easily cover it, not saying we're using those monies, I'm just saying we have money, and I, I believe that we've been saying that we don't have money in ways to protect ourselves from spending more than we should, but we do have some money, and I think we need to be real with the public that this is not going to make us cut positions or have to lay people off at this moment in time, the economy as a whole, if we can't bring it back, might have some issues with that, and we need to work on that. And I am more than happy and willing, and I know you already have the Blue Collar Committee, but I'm just putting this out there, to work with you as well, because this county can't live without the businesses in its own county, and we need to look at ways to do what we can to support those businesses as well. But I think that those businesses are trying their hardest to support their employees, we need to mimic that exact same mentality right now and do what we can to support our employees, and then we need to also make sure that we are doing what we can to support our businesses. And I know we've already begun some of those conversations this morning about talking about how it might look like in reopening, maybe certain industries and businesses, and how they might open up a little bit compared to what restrictions we have now, but we need to continue those conversations. But to me, this is a piece of the puzzle and not the entire thing at all, I think this is just another aspect of doing what we should be doing.
Thank you Supervisor Sabatier. Supervisor Brown?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Bruno, because I didn't say, nor did I imply, that this is the only issue that we have and that this was going to break us, I don't, I don't believe that, and I didn't say that, but thank you for the clarification, because this by itself, if this were the only thing that we had to look forward to, been an easy one, but it's not, this is a small part of it, of what we're going to get hit by.
Absolutely, you know, moving forward as the ad hoc committee, I know we've had the financial conversation and understanding what this thing looked like, you know, I myself have gotten in a position where I'm comfortable with what we're proposing is something we could do at this time. Now ultimately down the road, as we talked about businesses coming back and other things, there's a lot more work to be done, but I think at this point, what we're presenting today for our HDL, which may be, we're going to make some potential changes here on definitions, but we are moving in the right direction at this point. So all the meetings we've had, the follow-up meetings since we implemented the first quarter of this, or the first set of this, we have had a lot of meetings with department heads and others to come up with something, and I think this is something that is able to be supported, I think, to let our employees know that we're supporting them through the process, so. All right, Supervisor Scott or Supervisor Crandall, I don't know if you have any comments on this, if you don't, we'll go ahead and, go ahead Supervisor Scott.
I'm just interested to hear what the public has to say and our board members, but I agree, I feel that we do need to do something for our employees, and this is not going to be the last step, this is just step one in what we're going through here with the COVID-19.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I talked about this before, I think in the, in the stages where we were still meeting at the, at the chambers, that there probably needed to be something like this looked into, because during, I wasn't a supervisor during the fires, but I do understand that there's folks that did a lot of above and beyond work, and I just felt that they would need to be compensated, and it's evolved because of all these other different federal initiatives, so for me, I just want to make sure those people are recognized, and, not just recognized, but just taken care of in that manner, so.
Right. Okay, if there's no more discussion right now, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to a public comment, Carol, we'll start with you, and then we'll open up. Actually, I thought I saw a request come across my board here, Jake, could you open up, I thought I saw Lars, are you?
Yeah, looks like we have, there you go.
All right, excellent.
Great, thank you for the opportunity to talk here, I wanted to just touch on one part of this that is oftentimes overlooked, and I don't think intentionally, it's just a matter of permanent versus extra help employees, this proposed resolution is for permanent employees, which is great, however, it would not offer anything for extra help employees who, in my department alone, I have over a dozen essential extra help employees who are working during this event. The fact that EPSL is offered to not just permanent but also extra help, that's a benefit that is, that extra help can tap into, it seems, seems odd, I would say, that the extra help would not be considered for this specific portion that we're looking to extend to permanent essential, I mean, in the sense that not extending hazard duty pay or stipend or leave, whatever benefit we want to call it to extra help, would be a disincentive to those who have worked during this event, so I would hope that that would, that would be factored into the, into the discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you Lars.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
Lars, if you're still online, I just, I know we've had, not the conversation, but we've brought up the idea of discussing extra help, we wanted to make sure to get the permanent employees dealt with first and try to offer what we could, and that then we would have a conversation about extra help to see if anything at all was possible. When you say extra help, are you talking about full-time work, are you talking about part-time work, is there a variety, or is there one specific type of extra help as far as your department goes?
Well, my department, which is, I think, the largest user of extra help staff, we use them in a variety of different ways, it is both seasonal, full-time, which would mean, to simplify it, 40 hours a week for a short period of time, or throughout the year on a, on a, call it a part-time basis, so it's a mixture of both, but it's not, there are also permanent part-timers, but that is distinctly different from extra help part-timers, and that is largely based on the fact that they are, that they are not, they're not permanent, they're not benefited, but they are, for the purposes of this hazard that they are facing, they're shoulder to shoulder with everyone else.
Right, 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 and I completely understand your reason for advocating for them, and I'm hopeful that as an ad hoc committee would...
Yeah, hey Bruno, you know, our resolution in the agenda item today is talk about what we have in front of us, I know that there does need to be another conversation down the road that's brought back on extra help, but this item, item 6.3, is directly for what we're presenting today.
But it's related, it's related to hazard pay, and anything on the letter can be changed, and I'm not asking to make a change, but I'm hopeful that the ad hoc committee can reconvene as soon as possible, maybe ask admin to collect all the numbers so we can have some categories of extra help and number of extra helpers so that we can have a very well-knowledge conversation of what is happening and who might be asking for what so we can make a decision and bring it back to the board.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification, and Lars, thank you for your input.
And just for your board, I've had repeated conversations with Lars about this issue, I've involved the committee and other department heads that have knowledge on this issue as well, it's not forgotten, I was trying to work with your board on the issue of permanent employees at this time, and that's what today's agenda item is about.
EJ, did you want to make a comment, so you turned your mic off?
No, I just, I just left it on just in case we're moving forward, that's all.
Okay, all right, Jake, is the room still open, is there any more comment in the room at this point?
The room isn't open yet, but I see that Brian Martin also has a comment as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Sheriff.
Thank you very much, I appreciate this, so just from a department head standpoint, we had a lot of conversations about this, one thing I think is important for everybody to realize is that this isn't something that anybody in the county just cracked open out of their head to think, hey, take the opportunity to spend some taxpayer dollars, this is a direct response to what the Fed did, when they mandated that we give two weeks of pay to employees but didn't provide the funding to do that. So one of the things that the department had, we had a similar situation with the paid emergency leave during the fires when everybody had to evacuate, when you do something that's, unfortunately, sometimes if you do something that's right for your employees, it has some unintended consequences, and I think that was what we experienced before, we were starting to see, that there were some employees that definitely needed this, and it was absolutely the right thing to do to give them two weeks off, but there's also employees that are essential that continue to come to work, and just human nature, that they're seeing somebody get a benefit and some kind of compensation for simply going home when everybody would like to sit at home and get paid, it's kind of a disincentive to come to work. So this isn't, like I say, this isn't something that anybody just, the idea that just came to somebody, you know, I had to give everybody two weeks of time off, it's a response to what the federal government did. So not doing anything, I think, would have that unintended consequence of turning some employees who would otherwise be willing and able to come to work or work from home into employees that might not, and lose that productivity that we talked about. So the numbers that are out there, I don't know what the final numbers would be, but I know that our numbers are probably going to be lower because we've had some essential employees that have had to tap into this, they've had some illnesses that, you know, we've had all negative tests amongst our employees, but we've had some people that have certainly had some symptoms that were consistent with COVID exposure and have taken the opportunity to quarantine at home, and they've benefited from it, but at the same time, those employees who were coming in, I think not doing this would give them just a piece of rationale whether or not it's right or not, I think it's human nature that we would lose a lot of productivity. So with that, I get it, I understand that, you know, times are tough, and what I will tell you is that the employees here, and the employees that I see working throughout the county are very grateful to have jobs, and they realize what's going on, and it kind of bolsters their sense of service, that, you know, they have the opportunity to go to work and collect a paycheck, and we get it, so, thank you, those are my comments, and that's just from a, from a department head standpoint who's seen the effects of these types of programs.
Thank you Sheriff Mon. All right, any more department heads or anybody in the room that want to make comment on this item?
I'm going to unmute everybody, and we'll see if there's some additional comment. Okay, the floor is unmuted, if you would like to speak, announce yourself.
Okay Jake, we'll go to, go ahead and move to Carol, Carol, do we have any comment on this item?
There was no input received by email to this item, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, seeing none on both those, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action. Go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
I do have a request, and I know I submitted this to Carol privately in email and our correspondents about this item in the past few days, so we can learn as we progress, this is not the last emergency we're going to deal with, potentially not the last COVID-19 situation we're going to deal with, if we can, at some point in time, maybe during the budget time in September, when we come back with the true budget, not just the copy and paste budget that we're planning to do in June because of the setbacks to preparing the budget, but if we can get some sort of written report on how this was utilized, what total cost was, because I think it's important, especially if we're going to look at some of these things again in the future, that we kind of get a better grasp of how, what does that affect us financially, and how useful was this for our staff, just for future knowledge.
I think that's a good request, I know that when we were talking about the item also, we talked about maybe a potential word change from hazardous duty leave to essential worker, and I know, Carol, could you read out how that, that change would affect this item?
Yes, if, if you wanted to change that, what we would do is everywhere in the policy and the header that it says hazardous duty, it would, you'd substitute in there essential worker, so we'd stop calling this HDL and call it EWL, if that is important.
Okay, any comment on that from the board?
EWL sounds good.
Essential worker leave. Okay. All right, if there's no more discussion from the board at this point, we'll go ahead and entertain, we'll look for action.
And Mr. Chair, as to the resolution, you'd offer that as amended?
Okay.
So moved.
Sure, okay.
So it's been offered?
The office, I'll offer the resolution with amendments.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so Chairman, the other part of this is to authorize the county administrative officer to meet and confer with the labor groups.
Do you need that in motion form or consensus?
Anita, I yield to you, is that a motion?
I would do that by motion, you can also combine that if you'd like, if you want to take up Supervisor Sabatier's request to have this come back with a report that the actual budgets in September, I believe he said?
Yes.
You can do both of them together here, just what I'm saying.
I will amend the offering of the resolution to have...
I'm sorry, the resolution's been offered, that's done, all you'd have to do now is make a motion for the report that you wanted to come back in September, and then direct the CAO to meet and confer.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Brand.
Sorry.
I move to request a report on this leave, when possible by admin, I'm not going to give a specific date, hopefully around budget, but around then, and also authorize the county administrative officer to meet and confer the groups.
Second.
All right, the motion is second, go ahead and make the call, Carolyn?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Carolyn. Okay, moving along, we'll move to item 7.4, one second here, I'll get it ready. Sorry about that. Give me one second here. Item 7.4 is consideration of a temporary policy requiring county employees to wear masks in county facilities as a precautionary measure due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as you know, the Lake County Public Health Officer has issued guidance in which he has strongly encouraged the wearing of masks when our constituents, when everyone is in public to limit the spread of COVID-19. During the...
During the pandemic, to promote the safety and well-being of our employees and of the public, we're recommending that your board adopt a temporary policy requiring county where, county employees wear masks in county facilities when they are working with the public. Uh, masks will be provided by the county to employees and the policy is, is a very simple one. Uh, it reads this in this manner. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and according to the guidance of the Lake County Public Health Officer, effective immediately and, and until further notice for the safety and well-being of county employees and of the public, all county employees will be required to wear masks provided by the county when working face-to-face or in close proximity with the public or other employees unless protective shields are in place. In addition, when working in common areas or using restrooms and break areas of county facilities, county employees are strongly urged to wear masks. And, um, this policy, as we're bringing forward today, um, was, we did, we did seek the input of department heads and the original proposal was to, uh, require masks in all circumstances, uh, but we listened to the concerns of department heads about that. And what you see before you today is the policy that was modified somewhat, um, based on the department heads' comments about what they could effectively, um, manage with their workforce.
All right, Carol, thank you very much. Um, I can just report, I know when we went through this policy and talking it through with the department heads at last Thursday's meeting, you know, it did kind of evolve how we were going to be doing, uh, this policy. And I really appreciate each and every department head, uh, as they worked through this and the support, as they implemented each one of their departments to protect all of our employees and, and including, uh, the community as they come through. So, uh, this has kind of evolved, uh, but today we're having a good discussion on as we move forward and I think doing a good job of setting an example of what it may look like, uh, throughout the county as businesses are reopening and, uh, letting folks come in and dealing with the community. So we're not only, uh, asking folks to do it, we're doing it here in our offices too, which I think is, you know, the proper thing to do, so. Sue, uh, any comments from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Um, no, I, I do appreciate the, uh, conversation. I think this, uh, uh, very much so relates to our previous agenda item that we were discussing. Uh, if, uh, we're going to be talking about, uh, the potential, um, and I know we changed it from hazard, but that was part of the reason that we started the conversation, uh, then we need to also take it seriously that we want to protect our staff and that this right here says, we want you to do everything possible to protect yourself because you are going to be in situations where there may have been some traces of COVID-19 left behind and we want to make sure that you're not going to, uh, get sick. And again, just like you just mentioned Supervisor Simon, this is a great lead by example type of situation where, uh, we, this is not going to go away when we, uh, lift the shelter in place. We're still going to have to figure out how to do social distancing, um, whether it's, uh, wearing a mask or not, we'll see how things evolve, but I think that this is a great step in not only protecting our, uh, our staff, but leading by example and letting the public see that this is how it's done.
Thank you. Uh, did we lose Tina? Okay. All right, uh, Supervisor, go ahead Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I remember, um, when we discussed with the department heads, um, about this subject, this topic, one of the concerns, and I'm not sure exactly where it came from, but I remember, um, discussing that if we imposed such a, uh, policy, it would, it would potentially urge some to want to take the eight weeks. Um, I, I definitely, that's not what we're trying to do, you know, so I just wanted to kind of emphasize that, that we're not trying to do that, we're just trying to make sure that our, our employees are safe and that they're not infected and that they don't potentially get anyone else infected, which of course is a liability thing. But, um, I, I also wanted to make sure that we had, uh, we had the opportunity to provide masks and whatnot for them. And, and I'm only saying that too, so that that way the, uh, public can hear us talk about that, cause that's commonly a question that I think would be brought up, so. Um, but otherwise, I think it's a good policy and I want to make sure, just like anything else, you want to make sure that, uh, we're keeping the workplace safe.
Mr. Chair, I just got word from Supervisor Scott, she did lose internet and she's trying to get back on. Um, I, I think it might be beneficial to take a brief pause and give her the opportunity to come back on.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and take a, uh, five-minute break while we're trying to figure out Supervisor Scott's connectivity here.
It looks like she just hung back on.
Okay. Let's see.
A five-second break.
Five seconds, yeah.
She's, looks like she's connecting her audio.
Here she is.
All right, I, I can talk.
That's all right. We talked about that earlier, the, the plan that was brought for connectivity. All right.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to add that this, um, draft policy you're considering today, from our view, is really, um, being proposed as one component of plans that are being to en, enhance safety in county facilities during the pandemic. Um, we're also going to encourage department heads to make gloves available, uh, to employees for the times that employees want to use them. Um, the Public Services Director has also already, I understand, already placed touchless hand sanitizer dispensers on, uh, the first three floors of the courthouse. And next week, we may ask your board to consider an ordinance, um, requiring that the public also mask when coming into county offices.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, I'm wondering, and I, I know that there's, uh, already a county, um, order highly recommending that people mask themselves. Uh, I'm wondering if with this, uh, adoption, if it's adopted, um, that this can also be shared with the courts to let them know that this is what we are going to be practicing with our staff in the building and if they can please, um, uh, parallel those efforts, that that would be great?
You bet, and I've arranged to have a conversation with the Court Executive Officer this afternoon about that very thing.
Perfect.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, any more comments for the board on this item? Supervisor Scott?
My only question, I might have missed this, is do we have masks available to be able to give to our employees? I know this is part of that, I know it's hard to get them.
The E O C has a number of expired N-95 masks that we acquired during the fires, or at least they have access, it could be that they're still in the possession of public services. So those are going to be made available to any department head that requests them. Uh, and, and I believe in other departments like my own, we are actually in the process of acquiring masks because those N-95s can be kind of uncomfortable. So, uh, we're in the process of acquiring that gear for our employees so they can be protected.
Thank you.
And this will also include just, uh, clarification, good question, uh, Tina, clarification on, uh, face covering, would this would, is not only going to, I guess how it's written here, uh, opportunity for folks to have some homemade face coverings. Uh, I know there are different renditions and other things of that out there, um, that are happening now, and they are a little bit more comfortable also, and it does, you know, help, you know, with the spreading of. So would that be included in this or is it just strictly masks only?
I think the guidance is that any kind of cloth covering is acceptable. Uh, so if, if
One more clarification.
Want to wear their own, they have a preference for their own or want to make a particular fashion statement, uh, that's okay too, but it's mainly to cover, uh, your mouth and nose.
Okay, just one clarification, thank you, Carol. All right, if there are no more questions from the board, we'll go ahead and open it up, um, Jake, we'll go ahead and start with you, we'll open it up, we'll open the room up for, uh, conversation on this item, item seven point four.
Yeah, it looks like we have a comment from Lars. Uh, I'll give him the floor first.
Okay.
Lars, are you there?
I'm here, yeah, Lars, you're the Public Services Director, just to, uh, follow up on the, the availability of the masks. Uh, we, we have, uh, a process in place for, um, for basically cleaning supplies already with all the department heads and their staff to, uh, to coordinate with, uh, with my staff here to ensure that they can get those supplies. We would just add, uh, that, that same, uh, follow that same process for the masks. So just to follow up a little bit with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lars. Okay, Jake, if we don't see anything else, go ahead and we just open up the room. The public cannot put on this.
Okay, I will open up the floor. Okay, the floor is unmuted. If you would like to make a comment, please announce yourself.
Okay. All right, um, Carol, do we have any public comment on this item?
None was emailed in, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
And if you're very desperate, there's one behind Rob that you could always grab.
Yeah, Supervisor, Supervisor Brown?
So, uh, so I just want to be clear on what the order, I don't have, I got 266 page to go through here, but I know, I know it's for county employees, but what, what are we doing about the, the public, to be exact?
Nothing at this moment in time, it's just for our staff.
Okay, because that was, that was what I asked, asked to come up originally was that
And, and Anita and I Anita and I have been working on that and expect to have something on your agenda for the public next week. We're, we're definitely bringing that forward before the, any consideration of the shelter place being, order being lifted, which at this point goes through May third.
So the point that I made last week when we talked about this was if we're considering hazard pay or whatever we want to call it for employees because of this risk to dealing with the public, we should require that the public wear masks coming in to minimize that exposure to, to our employees. And so then it got turned around to where the employees wear the masks and, uh, the public, we don't have anything. So I, I'm not sure why, why couldn't we just say that? Why couldn't we just include that in there?
Think what we're doing, obviously, just like everything else we're doing here, we're working through the process. I know that right now we have an order from the Public Health Officer really encouraging everyone when they leave their home that they should have a mask on. I know that doesn't mandate anything and they're working on it. I, I, I believe there's been a couple of conversations and, you know, by next week we should have something coming back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I hope Anita will
Okay.
Because it was her it was her opinion that your board would need an ordinance to require the public, this is a policy for your employees. The employees are, you know, obviously a, a universe which is within your direct control. The public is different and, uh, Anita's got her mic off, so here you go.
Okay, well, uh, again, it was going to be an urgency ordinance, that's how I drafted it, the draft is completed, uh, it, it will, I'm sure warrant further discussion, but it's an urgency ordinance because your board can, there is no public health order presently that requires the use of masks.
Yeah.
The ordinance can require the use of masks within county facilities. And so that's been drafted and it was my understanding that it was going to go on the week after this policy document. Now, your board can add the public in a policy document, but there's no real oomph to that because members of the public don't have to follow county policy.
Well, then we closed the courthouse. I mean, here, here's the thing, we
It's closed now.
There's still people coming in, I mean, we
Only to the courts, to my understanding, I don't think people are coming in for any other reason.
I get that and I, I guess I can't get into that discussion because that was in closed session about, there's, there's, I'll be careful about that. There was some, there was some concern expressed why we were making the decision that we just made over the resolution, that people are coming into the courthouse, even though it wasn't for, for, uh, county business, they were coming into the courthouse and so that's why all of our employees are at risk. So that, if we, if they're at risk, we should be protecting them. The only way to protect them from this supposed risk is to have, one of the ways is to have them put a mask on. So that's what, that's what I had suggested originally and so now it doesn't seem to be as much of a risk apparently.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Uh, I, I agree with Supervisor Brown that it, it seems to, um, and I understand the reason for piecemealing it, it's two different, uh, ways about it and one of the policies took a little bit longer to put together and we weren't expecting that, uh, to hear from Anita today that it was ready to go, ready to go for next week. Uh, I would like to suggest that if it's ready to go, then let's put together a special meeting so we can apply that as quickly as possible, if that's allowed in a special meeting, uh, to do so, because it does make sense that if it's urgent for one, but yet people still can go in, uh, from time to time and using the courts, uh, they're still pushing buttons on the elevator, they're still, uh, touching the railing, they're still potentially using our restrooms because we can't control that and, and they have access to those things. Uh, and so I would also agree that that, uh, ordinance policy, uh, needs to come sooner than waiting a whole entire week and if it's possible to put that on a special agenda and have that within the next, uh, 24 hours, within the next 48 hours, whatever it is that we can do, uh, to say that it's not just about, uh, the precaution between employees and, and, and staff, it's also the precaution between the interaction between public and employees.
There is a draft prepared, uh, in large measure it mirrors what employees are expected to do, uh, but certainly it can be taken up, uh, Carol, I don't know how, what condition you feel it's in, I've written it, it's there, you can, it's a, an urgency ordinance, so it doesn't have to be a regular board meeting, it could go on a special meeting upon 24 hours' notice.
And I felt that it needed further discussion and I need an opportunity to speak with the Court Executive Officer too, because they play a part in this and how it will be enforced at the front counter, if we're going to have to place county staff there, et cetera. I don't know that we can rely on security since they are the court employees. I think it, I think it needs more work and I don't think the conditions are changing dramatically between now and the 28th that, um, that would warrant a special meeting. But, but I can absolutely assure you, we can complete all of that and be ready by the 28th.
Okay, I've heard the opinion of, uh, two board members at this point, um, yeah, I know the difference between the policy and the ordinance, uh, you know, I thought that, uh, we were moving in the direction of step one, step two, uh, trying to be prepared as we were going to be dealing with different things being opened up and opportunities as we move through. So, um, yeah, can do it either way, but ultimately it's going to take a little more time. You know, I, I, I'm good with waiting until 28th, I guess, so. That's just my opinion, uh, the rest of the board threw away in, it needs to be a special
I'm, I'm good with it, I'm good with it, it's taken
Right now.
Taken six weeks to talk about, I guess, you know, another week won't, won't really matter, won't hurt much.
If possible, I would like to see it as a special meeting, if not possible, then we'll take it up on Tuesday at the latest.
Yep. Uh, Supervisor Scott or Supervisor Crandall?
I, I agree with that, that if we can do it in the next couple of days, do it or not, wait till next Tuesday. But I think we have to be under the understanding that putting a mask on doesn't jeopardize when you're hitting buttons that fill your hands and that's hand cleaning, covering up your, your face, um, doesn't stop the, the virus from moving around with your hands.
I've seen people breathe on the buttons.
Supervisor Crandall?
I'm fine either way. If we do a special meeting, actually, there's a couple of other items that, on this agenda that I was going to say the same thing, but with this, I feel the same way.
All right, at this point, we'll look to, uh, we'll hear from you, Carol, by the end of the week here, but, uh, the 28th seems to be what we were slotted for at this point, moving in that direction.
Thank you.
Okay, on the policy that's at hand today, uh, we'd be looking for action from the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the temporary policy requiring county employees to wear masks in county facilities as a precautionary measure due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay.
All right, motion in a second, go ahead, Carolyn, go ahead, call the roll call.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Got to get off mute.
Oh, sorry, stand here.
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we added a, uh, extra item, uh, I guess we would call this under, uh, item number four, number four point three, uh, the letter to the governor. Uh, the Supervisor Sabatier wrote, so I, Carol, are you going to share that letter with us on our screens here, or are we going to move forward?
I have plan to share it, forgive me just a moment.
Okay.
Can you see that there, Mr. Chair?
There it is.
Okay, and so, um, I'm sharing this on behalf of Supervisor Crandall, excuse me Supervisor Sabatier. Is the font large enough, or would you like that larger? Is that readable for everyone? Bruno, is it large enough?
Uh, it's large enough for me, but I'm using a fairly big screen. Is it possible, if the board allows me to just read it out loud, uh, all of the public can know exactly what it says, in case they're looking on their phones or something like that?
Yes, and I just made it bigger too, so you go for it.
Okay. Uh, so to the Honorable Governor Newsom, uh, we thank you for your guidance through this unprecedented time of dealing with COVID-19. As we move towards the anticipated day of lifting or extending the shelter in place order, we respectfully request that you place trust in the counties, their elected officials, and their appointed public health officers. Not all counties are being impacted the same, yet we believe that our, all counties are as concerned about COVID-19 as anyone else. We respectfully request that you remove the state shelter in place orders and provide safety guideline standards so that each county can open up their shelter in place orders and make their own cautious decision on how to reactivate businesses which are truly struggling. We need you to trust that we have the people's health, both physically and economically in mind. We understand that opening up the economy too quickly can create a surge in physical health issues, but we also understand that prioritizing physical health only can have detriment, not begin with communities as well. With the issues of the Paycheck Protection Program, where many of our businesses were denied or failed to be approved for financial support, this only exacerbates the economic issue and the morale of our business owners, as well as their employees. By formulating a plan with each business on how best to open using public health guidelines, we can bring back the independence that our businesses need in order to successfully bounce back. A California-wide action is difficult to take, because what will work for the County of Lake may not work for Los Angeles County or other metropolitan areas, and vice versa, what works for Los Angeles County will not necessarily work for Lake County. Again, we respect that you give all counties safety guideline standards as we move forward, and give us the ability to choose how we navigate the reactivation of our economy, while still ensuring the protection of our vulnerable populations. We request that you do this as of May 1st, and no later than this, as another month of bills are stacking up. While many bills have been postponed, they will still need to be paid, which means we can anticipate an added potential economic hardship for paying multiple months of rent, mortgage, taxes, utility payments, et cetera. This may add an exacerbated slump to an already beaten down economy. We can do this, especially here in Lake County, and we hope that you will provide us the ability to make our own decisions. We thank you for your leadership in protecting us from a much larger issue, such as the one New York is dealing with. But now is the time for local jurisdictions to take control. We have learned how to flatten the curve together, and now we can use this knowledge to move forward while protecting both the health of our residents, as well as the health of our economy. And Milk, you're muted right now.
Thank you, Bruno. We'll get back where we can see everybody. I look to open it up for questions, but I challenge you.
Uh, I think Carol needs to close down her, uh, share.
There we go. Alright, Supervisor Scott?
Um, yeah, I still believe that we should, um, you know, look at this letter now, but still give it a week before we approve it, so the, so, um, our constituents have a time to chime in. I'm a little concerned about the, um, looking at the letter, it says safety guidelines. I think that should read, um, public health benchmarks. Um, you know, being given a benchmark of when we see things dropping in, in different areas, if, um, that's when we open up certain things. I know some areas are doing that across the county. Um, I'm also concerned about not looking at this in a regional effort. I think, even though we've had low cases here in Lake County, we have a neighboring county that has really high cases, and if we were to start opening things up, I think people from Sonoma County are going to flood on Lake County, and then we're going to be faced with the same problems that they're having now. So I'm a little concerned about not looking at, um, not just the county level, but a region, um, looking at our neighboring counties and what they're doing. But those are my comments with the letter right now.
And, and if I may,
Supervisor Sabatier?
I, i- if I may just, uh, offer some rebuttals to that. Um, we should never stop looking at the benchmarks. We should never stop looking at, uh, what's going on in neighboring counties. Uh, and I think we should continue working, as has been, uh, the, the state of our, uh, work so far, with neighboring counties to make sure that we're, we're paying attention to everything. But at the same time, we are the only ones that can make the decisions for what happens here in Lake County, and we shouldn't make those decisions blindly and without looking at our data that we're a- always continuously reviewing. Uh, but at the same time, I think that we have learned enough, and we've, um, seen enough, that we're able to make our own decision. I am not asking for Dr. Pace to not be in the picture in helping us make some of these decisions, uh, as he is the most aware person of what could happen with COVID-19 if we start seeing numbers shifting in a direction we don't want them to. Uh, and this does not say, open it up automatically. That will be our decision on how to do so, versus someone else who doesn't really truly understand maybe how it is that our economy works. Uh, so there's nothing in there that sets what that's going to look like. It just says that we will take control of that, and we will decide what that looks like on our own.
But I think too, if we're, we're looking at the Governor to do this, I think he needs to, we also need to be sure that we're protecting ourselves, and that he's just not going to be providing safety guidelines to the counties, all of counties in California. I, I would like for him to see, um, to say, um, public health benchmarks. Um, I know that we believe that we will make the right choices, but will other counties make the right choices protecting them and ourselves also?
And, and I don't disagree with, if you want to change it from safety guidelines to public health benchmarks, I'm absolutely, um, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Uh, y- y- you know, after reading through the letter, I think it's, you know, it's got the right tone, um, I, I think, in asking about our local, um, you know, our authority as local, uh, elected officials. A couple of changes, I, I would like to see if we're going to move forward with this letter, would be, um, number one, I would like to put the Public Health Officer before the elected officials in the beginning paragraphs there. The Public Health Officer, this is a public health emergency, and I understand we are elected officials, but I'll be, I am not a doctor. I do not know the science. You know, we are going to need to rely on those public health officials, and I just think switching those two, uh, for me, would change the tone, that the Public Health Officer would drive decisions as we move forward. It is our job, as always, to question and, uh, come up with the concerns that are coming from the community, but, you know, I clearly understand the level that the Public Health Officer has in protecting this as a communicable disease, as it moves through, um, through this pandemic process. So, that would be one thing I'd like to change, and the other, uh, is the May 1st deadline, uh, making a, uh, request that mandatory that he does it by May 1st. I don't know if that'll get us where, uh, where, uh, where he wanted to go, uh, Bruno. Uh, I was wondering if we could do, eh, you know, um, you know, as quickly and efficiently as possible, or something like that. We can put that May 1st deadline in. Um, but I just think that, you know, at that point, they're going to be like, alright, you know, mandating us to get this done by May 1st. His order, I think at this point, I thought it was talked around the 10th or later or something. Uh, so, that would be a concern of mine, just putting in that must be done by this date. Uh, will probably not get us a long way with that. So, those are two concerns of mine. Um, I don't know how to fix the language error of, you know, as quickly as possible, putting the authority back in, you know, the elected officials and the public health officials hands of Lake County. Uh, would be something maybe a little bit better, but, uh, those, I think overall, you know, after, after reading it and, and going through it, you know, um, I don't think it's, it's a letter. But I do agree with Tina a little bit, we said it earlier, and that's why, you know, I thought it was a no too, having the public being able to weigh in on it, that was very important. Um, so, that's about it for me on those. So go ahead, Bruno.
Just to, uh, go on those two, uh, options, number one, uh, you're right, it's a public health emergency. Uh, the way the Governor has been focused on it, is through a public health emergency, and I think it speaks his language by putting public health officers first, and so it might make the letter more, um, amenable to having an effect. Uh, so I'm all for putting public health officers in the beginning. We're still involved, we are involved. Uh, so I have no qualms with, uh, that change at all whatsoever.
Yeah, all we're doing is swapping those two. Public health official and boom, that would just be a simple swap right after, there's the elec- and elected officials.
And the May deadline, I'm going to be honest with you. I, I wasn't even certain if I should put something like that in there, but I feel like we need to at least say, we're waiting on you, we're, we're, we're looking for, uh, some movement, because we feel, when we look at our numbers, we, we flatten the curve. Uh, and we're not seeing a, a, an increase at this moment in time, and we see our tests going up. Um, so I, I don't know how to rephrase it exactly, but I, I, I think we're in parallel as far as what we're looking to have it say.
Maybe we could put it in the context of our local public health officials, um, our shelter in place order expires by May 3rd, and we would hope that, you know, maybe we could get an answer before then, you know, more of that way.
I like that.
You know, expect a response before ours, you know, was up, yeah. I don't know how to think out the exact language, but I think that might be a good idea.
Yeah. And also, one last comment, um, you said, uh, that you agree with Supervisor Scott about the public. Um, I understand that, and I respect that, and right now, we're trying to be transparent by posting, uh, uh, on the video and reading it out loud for people to hear. Uh, but we've been hearing from the public constantly for the past month, and so we have heard from the public whether they're really afraid of COVID-19, or whether they're really afraid of the economic issue. Um, so I think that we have been getting a lot of feedback throughout this whole process to know whether this is something we want to submit today, or if we want to wait for the week. Uh, so I just wanted to make that statement as well.
Supervisor Scott? No, I'll go to Supervisor Scott and then you, you put it.
I think because this is a public health emergency, I think we're not doing ourselves justice by not hearing what our public health officer, um, thinks of our letter. And I know, I don't believe he's on this afternoon, so that would be another reason to wait and, and hear what he feels, and maybe if he feels that we should have other things included in this letter.
Thank you, Tina. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, thank you for making this letter so quickly. I, I know you said you were working on it while we were, uh, talking earlier. Um, I, I do think it's important to have the public weigh in. I do, I do agree, we have heard from many different, um, people and constituents about their concerns about this, but if we're going to do a letter like this. That's why I said earlier, I was talking about possibly doing a, um, special, we talked about doing a special meeting for, uh, something else on the agenda. Maybe we add these two things together, and maybe Thursday or Friday, knock these two things out. That way, we give people a chance. More than likely, and, and maybe some people won't come to the, or comment on the meeting, but at least we gave that option. Um, I, I think too, we need to have a test speech strategy in place, and that's another good reason that I think, Tina, that you brought up, uh, having Dr. Pace on, so that he can weigh in on that type of thing, because, uh, th- those are, uh, important concerns to have. Um, so, yeah, I'm on, I, I, I'm not saying wait a week, I'm not saying wait two days, or send it now. I'm saying we should, uh, ensure that we allow the, uh, public to have input.
Supervisor Brown?
I'm ready to make a, I'm ready to take action on it now. I mean, Dr. Pace was on earlier, and he knew that this was coming on, and he didn't ask that, wait, wait for his review, and, or anything. I, I, I think it's, um, it doesn't commit us to anything over and above what we would be working with him on, basically. I think the letter would be crafted in such a way that he would have input. All, all we're doing is offering input to him. So, we're asking the Governor to allow us the opportunity to ha- to work with our public health officer to better determine the needs of our, uh, county locally. That's all he's asking for on here, and I don't think, I don't, I don't need, I don't need to come back to, I've read enough of it, so I think I'm good.
Okay. Alright, so go ahead Supervisor Sabatier.
A- a- and I, I wanted to kind of echo the same thing. Um, we're not trying to get, uh, Dr. Pace out of the equation, and, uh, I think that we're, we're trying to say that we will work with what we've been working with to crash to the orders that we've created ourselves for our county that may differ from what the state has been doing. Uh, and I'm also, uh, in the letter, made sure to say that we are requesting, uh, certain guidelines, or as Supervisor Scott mentioned, public health benchmarks for us to follow from the state, because I think that that would help us regionally if there were those benchmarks to make sure that we follow. As far as the testing, day one in February, we've been saying we're going to get more testing. If we trust that in two weeks, we're going to have more testing, to the point that we feel it's adequate, we're going to be here in September still waiting for more testing. It, what we need to look at is, we've been waiting for more testing, we haven't seen the surge in our hospitals. We don't want to not be cautious. We want to continue being cautious, but we want to be cautious in a way that we have a little bit more control to open up stores that typically only have maybe 10 people coming in at a time, um, and, and now they're closed, and 10 people at a time all day, uh, not at a time, 10 people all day, i- is easy to figure out how to do social distancing. But right now, because they're not on the essential list, they're not allowed to be open, and they're being harmed economically. I think there's some easy fixes that we can do, and I think that local control is the way to go, that's the way he's leaning. We're just making, this letter would just help him say, see that, yes, this is definitely the way that we want it to be, we want to remain cautious. It is still important that we don't mess up what we've done. We've done a lot of work, which has been hard on our community, but we've done a lot of work to make sure that we reduce the impact. We are not looking to do the reverse by doing any other action.
Okay, any more comment from the board or discussion?
Bruno, you did talk, you talked about restrictions, uh, in place. Do we have all those in place? Let's say that the Governor says, hey, you know, I got this letter. You know, here you go. Are, are we going to have everything ready? Are we ready to, we ready with those restrictions and those, uh, laws and those in place right away? Are we ready to make that move, do you think?
I, I, I feel that, uh, during our conversation, uh, we seem to have consensus that we're looking for plans from businesses, so that we're ready to go when it's time to go. Uh, I think we talked a little bit about opening up the restrictions that we have, that are above and beyond what the states are. We talked about our lake, we talked about the real estate, um, uh, real estate agents. Uh, so I think we're trying to do our part to make sure that we're ready to go when the Governor says go, and so I, I don't think that we're far off from that ability of being able to make those changes happen. Uh, I don't want to sit there and say we're going to open up as soon as possible, but I want us to be able to do step-by-step process as soon as we're allowed to do that step-by-step process.
Yeah, you know, I, I would agree. The, the request in the letter is allowing us to work with our local public health officer as we do that, and we follow the guidance of, uh, a doctor. Um, you know, I know we all have our own thoughts and feelings, uh, but following the professionals in this is exactly what we need to do, so.
And so, I, I am willing to, uh, change it to public health, uh, benchmarks, instead of, uh, safety guidelines or whatever it says right now. Um, move public health officer, appointed public health officer prior to elected officials. And, uh, I am also willing to, right now, let me just read it out loud. It says, "We request that you do this as of May 1st. Uh, we request that you review the shelter in place before our May 3rd expiration of our emergency, uh, declaration."
Yeah, for me, that's, well, those, those were my concerns at this point, so.
And I appreciate the feedback. I think it should be a letter from us, not just a slam it through type of thing, and, uh, I'm, I'm happy to hear that you feel the tone is positive. I, I, I think highly of the actions that we've taken in the state of California, because there's a reason why New York finds itself in its situation versus us, when they were two weeks behind in, in doing their shelter in place. That, to me, made a difference, and I do not want to jeopardize the unfortunate hard action we had to take. Um, but I would like, um, I, 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 there's a reason that you and I, all of us are here, uh, on these seats. We're not sidelines type of people. And it's hard for us to not have full control and waiting on a state, or waiting on someone else to tell us go. And so, uh, I think that we are intelligent enough, and prepared enough, and knowledgeable enough with our experience of what we've been through, uh, to work, put our, all, all our heads together, and that includes our public health officer, to make those types of decisions as we move forward.
Supervisor Scott?
I think with that comment that you're saying, I think with this letter, we also should be thanking the Governor for his quick actions, and, and because of that, we are in a much better place than many other states that we, we find ourselves in, does that?
And I, I'll just reread you, uh, "We thank you for your guidance through this unprecedented time of dealing with COVID-19," is the very first sentence that we have on there. Uh, and then again, later on, uh, we thank you.
It's, that's different than, I guess, the letter that it was emailed to me.
Oh yeah, the, the one that I read was slightly updated.
Okay. Okay.
The one that we put up, that Carol put up, and the one that I read out loud was slightly updated, and the last paragraph, "We say we thank you for your leadership in protecting us from a much larger issue such as the one New York is dealing with, but now is the time for local jurisdictions to take control. We have learned how to flatten the curve together, and now we can use this knowledge to move forward while protecting both the health of our residents as well as the health of our economy."
Okay. Any more comments from the board? Okay, Carol, do we have any public comment on this issue?
No. No email comment.
Okay. Jake, can you open up the room and see if we have any comment in the room?
Yes, yes, I can. All right, the floor is unmuted. If you would like to speak, please announce yourself.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Here, no public comment. Go ahead and bring it back to the board for action. Go ahead Supervisor Scott.
And I just want to say before I make a motion, I also really appreciate Dr. Pace and the, the approach that he's taken to make sure that we take the right actions. I also believe that that had an effect in the numbers that we see right now currently in our county. So none of this is to go against what our governor is doing, and none of this is to go against what Dr. Pace is doing. I just want to see us have a bit of better control in how we move forward, now that we know that we've done a great job in, in dealing with the unknown. And with that, I move to approve the letter to Governor Newsom.
Bruno, one second, unless I lost him. I think, did EJ drop off the call, Jake?
It looks like it. He's trying to get back in right now.
Okay. So just, if you could pause for one minute there.
Yeah, of course, of course.
There he is, okay, he's back.
Okay. So I move to approve the letter to Governor Newsom with the noted amendments, which include the, the safety guideline standards into public health benchmarks, to moving public health, appointed public health officer to the first mention of officials that would be leading each county, and then changing the May 1st deadline to state, "We request that you review the shelter in place executive order before May 3rd," which is our expiration of our emergency ordinance, or something along those lines. I'd like to make it somewhat, if we can allow staff to kind of smooth that one out.
I think we'd have to do that before we make the motion, right, Hey?
So we request that you review your shelter in place executive order before our May 3rd expiration of our emergency declaration.
You know, I would put that out to Anita or Carol, you know, just if that's, just want to make sure we have it clarified there. I got no problem with how we're trying to get it done. I just want to make sure-
You said yes to the first one, but I forgot what I said.
Yeah.
So you said, "We want the governor to review his order before our emergency declaration expiration." I don't, I'm not sure that's what we want to say, because our emergency order is likely to be in place a long time and to stay in place for future waves, or did I miss?
Our shelter, our shelter in place order is slightly different than our emergency order, so maybe our shelter in place order expires-
Expires, okay.
Yes.
The May 3rd, using that May 3rd deadline. Right now, it could change, but I mean-
Right.
Okay, so then the two changes I'm noting is, I'm switching in the first paragraph so that the health officer is before elected official. I'm changing in the fourth graph, the fourth line, it's going to say something like, "Request that you do this before our shelter in place, our current shelter in place order expires on May 3rd, 2020." Is that correct?
Yes, and then on the second paragraph and the fifth paragraph, the one where it says May 1st, it says safety guideline standards, if both of those can be changed to public health benchmarks.
Okay. Got it.
And I believe that concludes my motion.
Second. Okay, there is a motion in the second on this item. Carol?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
No.
Supervisor Scott?
No.
Supervisor Brown?
Hi.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Okay, we have calendars. I apologize, I jumped too fast there. Yeah, we have, currently, we have Supervisors Weekly Calendars and Traveling Reports, Item 7.1. Supervisor Scott?
I think Supervisor Sabate had a-
Supervisor Sabate?
I think we might want to go back to normal public comment, because I think all we did was Scott Dailyon's presentation and not open it up for public comment as general.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Sabate, yes.
Just in case.
We did skip right by it.
We didn't receive any public comment via email, any normal comment, it was all associated with agenda items.
Okay. All right, so now we'll move to Supervisor Calendars, Item 7.1. Supervisor Scott?
This evening, I'll be on the Zoom meeting with the City of Lakeport meeting tonight. Tomorrow, I have a Zoom meeting in the afternoon with the Director of Hope Rising, a first five Zoom meeting at 2:00. I have a CTA Zoom meeting at 5:00 PM on Thursday, and a Hope Rising meeting on the 24th at 8:30 in the morning. And that looks like all my calendar items. If you need to contact me, my telephone number is 849-4414, or I could be emailed at tina.scott@lakecountyca.gov.
Supervisor Scott?
So I have many phone calls, nothing that's necessarily on my calendar, just because I have no idea how long my phone calls will take. On Mondays, we're on the phone with CSAC and the state government, just to kind of get a glimpse as to what may be coming up in the near future, so that'll be again next Monday. I'll be in a CC4C meeting tomorrow, as they're still meeting to discuss how to clean up our communities, especially when things open back up. On our morning, EOCs have now been reduced to every other day, so Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, so tomorrow I'll be in on that phone call as well as on Friday. And I just plan to keep pushing in the areas that I feel we need to keep pushing and getting our message out there that we need more testing, we need more support for our businesses and for our workers, and so on and so forth. So that's pretty much my days, are filled with phone calls and emails.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, so today, I know I have at least three calls that I text that I received from constituents while we were meeting. In the meantime, tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday, I have a home cooks, there's a group out of Lucerne that's been working, trying to work on AV626 home cooks, and they want to try to bring something to the board, especially in the light of this whole situation with COVID-19. So I'll be meeting with them, or actually Zoom meeting with them. Friday, the blue collar meeting at 10:00, and then the COVID recovery meeting at 2:00. Let's see, then next Monday, I'll be, no, that's all I have actually until next Tuesday, where we come back to the board meeting.
Okay, it looks like we've lost Supervisor Brown, so we'll see him on air anymore. So my agenda review after today, you know, I don't have anything until Friday at this point with the recovery work group, oh, and then the morning VOC calls that are happening at 8:15 as we move through this process. I know that, just to report on attending the Region 9 meetings that happened on Monday, I think at 4:00 PM, I think that's when it's happening. That is a good informational call, gives updates on increased hours on unemployment. I know they are opening up from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, I think, as they move forward. I know they're working on getting more staff put in there. I also hear Dr. Pace on that call talking, I think it's to Dr. Dean about testing and other things as we're moving forward. So just making sure to get on those calls and hear essential stuff that's going to be put out to folks. There are a lot of folks with unemployment questions, trying to return those. I know it's really frustrating right now as far as getting through on the phone numbers, but hopefully that improved hours and other workforce being put in there will improve that as we move forward through this process. My cell phone number is 533-9615. You can also contact me by email as we move through this process, and then we'll be back here next Tuesday, obviously, for the meeting that we have. I have the Friday afternoon recovery meeting, which I'm proud to be a part of that with EJ Crandall and the rest of the folks on that, as we move forward and talk about how we can open up the economy. So that's it for right now, and thank you, everybody. It was a good meeting today.
Thank you.
All right. That covers everything. Thank you very much. Thank you all, staff, for putting this on. Thank you.
Quick question, before we leave, did we need to say if there was any action from closed session? I don't think we ever came back and said anything.
Very good question. There was anything, so do you want to just say it real quick?
No action taken in closed session.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Now it's a face check.
Bye. Yeah. All right, bye.